All right, good morning, everyone. I will call to order the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. And to begin, ask our clerk, deputy, to go ahead and take the roll call. Thank you.
Good morning. On the attendance roll call, Commissioners Bouzak, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, here, Baker, LaGrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Brevi, Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildebrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Vice Chair Green, Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 present, three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now for our invocation, I will call on Commissioner Baker. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. When I saw the agenda last week, I thought we'd need a professional. So I have invited my good friend, Pastor Kenny Hoskins. We both met when we were both running for school board in 2008, and longtime friend. He is the executive director of Oakdale Neighbors, which is an organization on the southeast side, Oakdale and Boston Square neighborhoods, and also the senior pastor at Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church. So Pastor Hoskins.
Let's pray. Holy One, lover of justice, thank you for your amazing power and the work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. We are mindful that you are able to bring hope through even the toughest times, strengthen us for the purposes that you have in our lives. Thank you for your great love and care, your mercy and your grace. We're thankful that you are always with us and will never leave us or forsake us. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice so that we might have freedom. Forgive us when we don't thank you enough for who you are, for all that you do. You brought us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. Thank you for every seat that has been filled here on today, and each mind and each heart that feels the presence of this room. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to use full understanding. Help us to value and appreciate the ones that we are about to meet with. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom and your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that invocation. All right, we'll start with our special order of business. And we have with us our sheriff, Michelle LaJoy Young, and whoever else she chooses to bring with her. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I'm going to introduce a couple of the key members of our staff that are here today. We've had a lot of changing faces, so I think it's always important to give a shout out to the people. So I just have the people from the sheriff's office stand up. We're here. And you guys all know, Under Sheriff Brian Muir, this is Captain Jason Richards, raise your hand, Captain Justin DeBode, this is Chief Deputy Jason Kelly, this is a new captain, Ben Kamenga, this is a lieutenant, Jen, help me, Jennifer, Manzinga, sorry. And then Kaylee Gilbert is our PIO. So I just want to say hi to all those. You guys can sit back down. If you guys have any questions we can't answer, we'll grab one of these guys to answer. So I am going to have Under Sheriff Brian Muir do most of the presentation, and I'll step back up to help answer questions, so have at it.
All right. Well, good morning. Thanks for having us here this morning. This morning, we're going to cover our law enforcement services. We've broken the sheriff's office into two different parts. One will be our corrections, one our law enforcement. And our law enforcement includes our patrol operations, our investigative or detective bureau, and then our support services, which is our community policing, our records, our communications division. We'll also be covering just a little bit as to what our values, vision and mission are. I know most of you have seen those time and time again, but we'll cover those here for those that haven't seen it. We'll cover some of our priorities, our key goals and metrics that we're tracking at the sheriff's office, some of our significant accomplishments in 2023, some of the challenges that we're facing here locally in Kent County, and just looking forward ahead, what the sheriff's office is looking to accomplish in 2024 and beyond. Our values, vision and mission, I know you've seen them. I'm just going to kind of cover our values, you know, with serving our community with integrity, compassion and empathy. And that's truly a hallmark of how our staff treats the community that we serve. Our vision is striving for professional excellence and innovation, and we'll talk about some of that innovation a little bit later in a few of these slides. Our mission, to provide that impartial and humane treatment for those entrusted in our care and that we have contact with within our community. And it truly comes from the sheriff all the way down, and that's a model that our staff really embraces and supports to the lowest ranks. Our strategic plan and priorities, they're very closely aligned to the Kent County plan here as well, too. And I'm just going to kind of highlight those. We won't read them word for word as to what they are, but public safety, closely aligned with the high quality of life for the county plan. Our community engagement, inclusive participation and effective communication, again, very closely aligned for your effective communication. We have the resource infrastructure sustainability, very closely aligned to your economic prosperity. And we look at public safety being ingrained into every one of those core values, not only for our priorities, but for the county's priorities as well, too. So there's a very close correlation between our priorities and this county as a whole. One of those priorities that we just talked about was our public safety goals. And our goals are reduce response time to emergency calls for service. We'll talk about that a little bit more in depth. Strengthen our police presence and visibility within the community. Deploy a well-trained specialty units throughout the county to augment services for all county residents, and to ensure the countywide readiness for critical incidents. And there's a few points on those that I want to cover. Recently, we presented to you some information as a staffing study, and I think we have a third party allocated to reviewing our operations, saying that we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have today. And that's something that we want to continue to do and optimize as we move forward into the future. We also want to talk about just the readiness and augmenting county services. Just this week, we're being tasked with a last-minute request to provide security for former President Trump down in Van Andel Arena here in our county. And that service is something that we need to be ready and prepared to do it in moments' notice. And without the appropriate staffing or resources and equipment, we can't do that. But it's a heavy lift for us. We're providing, you know, 50 to 60 officers to provide security because other agencies throughout Kent County can't do that. So it's a high point of our public safety goals is to make sure we're countywide readiness for critical incidents, not just the last-minute security request, but if there's critical incidents, active violence, something that's occurring in the county, we have to be prepared to respond to all of those incidents every day that we serve. And those, being available for calls, one of, again, of those public safety goals that we just talked about, we use a metric that is responding to our priority one and two calls for service. I know Commissioner Coleman shared a story with us weeks ago about a call for service that he made, but as you look at those priority one and two calls, those are some of the most significant calls for service that the public would call 911 for, someone breaking into your home, someone assaulting you, someone robbing you, the significant crimes. We want to be available, we need to have the resources available to respond to those incidents. And if you look at our 2023 calls for service for those priority one and two calls, the numbers don't look large, out of 73,000 complaints that we take a year, but those investigations take hundreds, if not thousands, of hours sometimes to complete. And those are the investigations that we owe it to the community to investigate thoroughly and fully and try to bring resolution to every one of those cases. And we'll talk about it a little bit more in the future, but our clearance rates on those crimes exceed both state and national levels, and we're proud of that. And that's something that we should all be proud of here at the county, that we have a safe community and that we're doing the best we can to investigate these crimes and respond as quickly as we can to those as well, too. So our objective in that public safety, making sure that we respond to those priority one and two calls, is 11-minute national average that we use. And that 11-minute average, as you can see, is somewhat slipping for us. Back in '21, '22, and then moving into '23, we're starting to see a decline. We have multiple factors for that. Our calls are more labor-intensive, they need more staff to be involved, which then drains our resources to respond to that next call of service that comes in. But we're also seeing a spike in crime here in West Michigan, especially in Kent County, and we've seen an increase in the calls for service over the last few years as well, too. Almost 14,000 additional complaints that we have just taken just a year ago. Some of that may be the post-COVID era, some of that is just the community being more able and willing to call for police assistance, but we're starting to see that time slide, and we don't want to continue to see it slide further away from what that national average And here's the average response time for each one of you. I know you all represent different districts. Here are your townships on both priority one and two, average response times for calls for service. I'll leave this slide up here a moment, just so you can kind of take a look at that. Some of the communities that contract services obviously have lower response times, and we'll cover that in just a slide here that summarizes the average of all the contracted services versus non-contracted services. But some of the outlined areas of the county, those averaged response times are further away from what we want them to be, not near that 11-minute average. Kind of see some of you looking still at the slide, so I'll give you another moment to take a look before I move on. All right. Thank you. So here's the average for our contracted versus non-contracted, with the contracted being on the left and the non-contracted on the right. How scary can it be if you're waiting 20-plus minutes for someone to respond to your house for a 911 call if someone's breaking into your home, stealing your car, doing something to you or your family? That is why we track this. This is a metric that's available on the Kent County Access Kent Dashboard on a daily basis for you to take a look at, to see what those response times are for your districts and the communities that you're representing. But we're aware of it on a daily basis, and we're doing everything we can to deploy our resources in the most effective means possible to lower those times, to get them back to national averages and to represent the law enforcement community as a whole well here in West Michigan. So outside of those response times and deploying our resources, being visible within the community, being available for those 911 calls, we'll kind of transition a little bit into our investigative bureau and what it looks like for clearing those crimes. So we took about 74,000 complaints last year, many of those being referred back into the investigative bureau. Again, the priority one and two calls closely aligned to group A and group B crimes. There is a difference between that. Priority one and two calls are the response to calls. Group crimes are what the FBI would categorize crimes for their stats and the reporting. So it's a little bit different. You'll see a few different things that are a little different on here, but group A is kind of where we'll put a little bit more focus on this morning, because those are the most significant crimes that we deal with that are victim-based. So this is where we're at with those Class A crimes, the most significant crimes, the murders, the robberies, the sexual assaults. We are below what we consider to be the 27% clearance rate. So 25% doesn't sound, you know, all that glamorous when you look at the clearance of crimes, but some of those crimes are harder to solve. And we've seen in, you know, an epidemic here in West Michigan with stolen vehicles. Well, we can't necessarily charge everybody for every one of those stolen vehicles. We're seeing hundreds of them, and that tends to be the kind of crime in those group A that will drive those statistics down. And we'll talk about some of the more significant crimes. In the last six years, we have 100% clearance rate of our homicides. We are higher than most in all robbery and serious victim-based crimes. But when you look at group A crimes, you look at 25, 27%, it may look on the low end, but we're dealing with a crime category that we can't change the stats to, but just to give you a little idea of where that stat goes, because you can see the decline from years past. This is the group B crimes, again, looking at a clearance rate of 57%, and we're exceeding that. So we've done very well in those group B crimes. A lot of those are the lower-level misdemeanor crimes, some of the crimes that are easy to get a clearance on, an OWI arrest typically take the driver into custody, they're convicted and charged, and that will help with those clearance rates. But we are exceeding what that national average in our metric is for our performance measures here as well, too. And again, if we look at what the clearance rate on some of the others throughout the state, we're exceeding that by, you know, 20, 30% in some categories, which is significant for our department and how we are responding and investigating all complaints here. I talked a little bit about the change, you know, that spike of stolen vehicles. We've seen trends in our community. If you've been tracking the news, at one point, you saw maybe cell phone store B and E's and takeover robberies, and it was stolen vehicles, joyriding pursuits. Well, what we've noticed here in West Michigan is if we let those crimes go by themselves, they typically continue. So we've tried a different effort. We're trying to stop a pattern as soon as we can. We've formed a metro pattern crimes team to address crime patterns, not just individual reported crimes. And we've seen success in that. We've seen multiple offenders arrested, over 163 felonies charged, both adults and juveniles charged, and that's significant for us in the fact that there's been some legislative changes with raise the age and appearance citations being issued for lower-level crimes. So what we saw as a trend here, especially in Kent County, was offenders that may have committed one crime that may have been sentenced to jail, stopping that pattern of crime, were now continuing to be in our community, reoffending, 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 before they finally were put to justice and served or convicted of any crimes. So we've tried to use multiple strategies. One, stop that pattern as soon as we can. And then, two, work with our prosecutor who's been great at introducing criminal enterprise charges. So individual crimes in themselves aren't necessarily going to put somebody in custody or take them out of the community for any length of time, but if we can combine those crimes, establish a pattern, our prosecutor's been great to work with issuing criminal enterprise charges, which are now more significant, which now keeps that subject out of the community for a longer period of time, hopefully ending those patterns of crimes and lessening the number of victims that we see within our community. So it really is a twofold effort, both on our part to identify those patterns, but then the cooperation of the prosecutor's office to help us issue those serious charges. And as we go into all those contexts, you know, I said 74,000 complaints, calls for service at the sheriff's office. One of our performance measures here is our use of force, and we're proud to say that we use less than one-half of 1% force in every incident throughout the sheriff's office. And some of those incidents of use of force out of those 74,000 complaints are very minor use of force. It's displaying a taser, it's displaying a firearm, it's giving verbal commands, having a K-9 come out and give some bark commands. We're not using significant amount of force in any of those incidents. And that's solely based on the training and the effort that we've put forth to make sure our officers are well-prepared, both in verbal de-escalation, mental health awareness, substance abuse disorder, and the investment that you've made as commission, providing us some technology with a virtual simulator, some of the top-end equipment that we can make sure that our staff is as best prepared and trained as they can be. And that's a number that we are proud, because it is very well below what the national average Transition just a little bit from that use of force to one of the other metrics that I'm sure some of you are curious about, as we've taken over the animal control. Again, it's hard to see, so I'll leave this up here for a little bit, but we've taken about 6,000 complaints through animal control, and on average, the number of complaints taken for each one of the townships and cities that represents. You see, obviously, a few spikes here in the city of Grand Rapids, but overall, the program has been very successful. We have really only a few townships that, at this point, either aren't interested or are looking into the possibility of going to the countywide ordinance, but it's been a successful program and it's been well-run since taking over here in the last couple of years. So we talked again about the priorities at first, and that community engagement, that inclusive part of the community is one of our performance measures as well, too. And we'll talk a little bit about what that rating metrics looks like here in a couple of slides, but just giving you a short little overview of some of the community engagement efforts that we're involved in. We participated in over 500 different events. A lot of those, if you've been to some of the major community events here in Kent County, especially right out here at the Calder, you've probably seen the sheriff's office more engaged into those events. It's hard to track how many people that we've contacted, so we don't necessarily always take an estimate, but we believe from what we've had, just on some of the events where attendance is required and or counted, we've contacted over 32,000 people. That's not the casual contacts that we have by setting up here at the Calder, being part of these larger events throughout the community, but these are all positive, non-adversarial contacts with law enforcement. And I think that really speaks to the community's strength behind law enforcement and the support that we've seen, while other communities haven't seen that support here throughout the nation. So it's really a positive that we're seeing. And I know Kaylee's here, the sheriff introduced her as our public information officer. If you watched our, you know, Twitter or X, whatever it's called at this point, and our Facebook feed, you see that we're having daily positive outcomes and contacts with the community. Those are hugely important to us as we look into the recruiting and bringing people back in here, not only to West Michigan, but then to work for the county or the sheriff's office. And that's why we put such a focus on having that positive forward two-way communication piece with our social media. So we're proud of that, and we see quite a bit of engagement efforts associated to that as well, too. Part of that engagement tool, again, like I said, has been great for us. You know, Captain DeBode and Captain Kamenga, who are both back there, introduced by the sheriff, are leading our hiring for the sheriff's office, and there is always a mention of what they see, not only from the county's website and the information that they're reaching out, but then from the sheriff's office as well, too. So having these community engagement tools and sharing these positive stories, how the community is supporting us, how we're doing proactive work and making the best of the resources that we have here, having an impact, they're bringing candidates from across the country, as far as Texas recently, just to be part of what we're doing here. So it's something that we're very happy with and proud of. We've also used that to help bring in cadets. We've partnered with the state on an M. Cole sponsorship grant. We've offered scholarship opportunities, and we're really seeing a diversity in the number of people working into our cadet program that see a future, not only in law enforcement, but working for county government as a whole. So the program has been hugely successful, a lot of that based on the engagement efforts and where we've been, kind of diversifying our presence at a lot of community events. We're drawing in a great wealth of diverse talent to the sheriff's office, again, something that we should be very proud of on the programs that we're working with. That objective that I talked about, how do you score having contact with 32,000 people? Well, we give them a survey, and we ask for them to complete that survey. And more likely than not, once the QR code, people are responding to those surveys. So we've got some good metrics. You know, out of a five-point scale, five being the best, of course, we're sitting very closely behind there. So people are happy with our services, not only on the community engagement pieces that we're offering them, but on the service that they get on the day-to-day calls. So again, something that we should all be proud of, especially you as commissioners, providing those resources and that personnel that we need to do things right, but then to have resources available to do those community engagement pieces, which are so important to us, to keeping the reputation of not only our agency, but law enforcement in general in West Michigan, positive. So it's a great metric to look at as to how we're performing in the community through their eyes. Our last priority that we had listed there was just the effective, efficient fiscal responsible services. Obviously, we're working on quite a few CIP projects. A lot of those are aligned with our corrections, but a lot of them have been aligned with our enforcement and overall department. And that's something that, again, we're very fortunate to have the support of not only the county commission, but the administrator and the community as to making sure that we make the improvements that are necessary to keep our operation top-notch. We've also continued to see some efficiencies and the capability of our communication center. That is by far one of the most critical pieces of our operations. That is the initial contact that most of our community has with our law enforcement services, and to make sure that that's up and running and most efficiently and effectively utilizing technology where needed is a key part of what we're going to look at here moving forward. Another one of our performance measures is just the training. Again, this isn't something that we should be below 100%, and we make sure we strive to always have all of our staff trained. That can be difficult when you've got 750 people, you know, close to 300 in our law enforcement services that may be off on vacation or sick, injured or not there, but we make sure that we reach back and they get that critical training that's needed, some of that mental health awareness, the substance use disorder. It's not something that if you're just not here today, you're not trained on it, you're not prepared to go back and serve the community. We make an effort to reach back, get everybody as they come back from those off payroll assignments and get them trained to the best of their ability, and that's 100% our staff is trained. De-escalation, again, is one of the ones we mentioned. I mentioned that again just because there's a heavy investment into our de-escalation virtua, which is that simulator that some of you may have seen when you toured the sheriff's office that we're using on a daily basis to help our staff cope with and process incidents that they may not see necessarily on all calls for service, but that they're mentally incapable and prepared to handle those if they do occur. So it's a huge investment on your part, and it's paying out heavily for our staff in the training that we have. Our 911 call center, again, one of our performance measure objectives here is answering those 911 calls. And anytime you call 911, you don't want to be on hold or listening to some hold music, waiting to report something that's happening. So it's important for us to answer those calls and to answer those calls quickly. And we're answering 95% of all 911 calls coming into our center in less than 15 seconds. And we'll go to the next slide, and it shows it's a little bit higher than that if you look at 40 seconds, but there's surge capacity that happens at the sheriff's office, which makes it difficult to answer every single call. You've all experienced, you know, some of the storms where the wires are down, trees are down, we've had the tornado come through, you know, the northern part of Kent County, the winter storms. Well, sometimes one incident can give you 500 calls from different community members, and there's just not one way to answer all those calls. So we work with Grand Rapids Police Department as a secondary public service answering point, the PSEP here. They handle our overflow, we handle their overflow, we do the best we can to handle all those calls, but there's just going to be a few during those surge moments where we're just not able to answer them all. But we are answering all, 99% of them, within 40 seconds. And that's still a long time to wait if you have something happening, but again, when we look at our metrics and how we're staffing our sheriff's office communication center, we know that it's typically the surge capacity where we're not able to answer those calls. And those are the storms, the things that we can't predict, typically not life-threatening matters, so we're comfortable with that metric being there, but we just definitely track it to make sure it doesn't slide away from us. The resource infrastructure sustainability, we're working with our staff. We work with our staff every day. We need to invest into them. Mental health, physical health, wellness is a huge topic right now in law enforcement in general. Over the last several years, we've seen a lot of our staff leave just based on wellness and how they feel that they can cope with the day-to-day stresses of being a law enforcement officer. So it's really critical for us to make sure that we have a lot of resources available to them. We have a peer support team, we use the Encompass program, and then we work with our staff to try to find some additional resources, most recently reaching out to Josh Spencer, looking for any grant opportunities to provide more resources for our officers to keep them better prepared, both mentally and physically. I think we all know that a better-prepared, mentally and physically capable officer is going to provide better services, be more calm, be more capable of handling those stressful moments that they encounter, better for all of us to invest into their wellness. And then we're also working through just developing a master plan for renovations to our facility. We had a few feasibility studies that were completed, one in our corrections and then one on our enforcement division, the one being the old Fleet Service Building, trying to find how to best utilize that square footage to our advantage and how much that's going to ultimately cost for us to make those changes. So we're growing at a rate that's almost putting us past capacity at our main office here on Ball, and really has surpassed our main capacity on the south end. And now we're pushing a lot of those resources to our north end campus that was just open and built for us. But we are starting to see that we are growing at a rate that we can't necessarily support with the infrastructure that we have, so we're trying to plan ahead for what that future looks like and where we can put our staff to serve the community. Kind of transitioning to some of the significant accomplishments, because I know we're trying to give this to you as best I can in about a half hour, so we're almost close and done. The one project that could probably speak hours on is our Kent County Emergency Radio Network. That is a first-of-kind in the state of Michigan. That is such a crucial piece of technology to be available to all public, private schools, housing students K through 12. It was a large investment, used ARPA funds to provide that security for schools to prevent those surge-capacity 911 call moments that we talked about during storms. Well, we know that critical incidents across the country, if something happens at a school, our 911 system crashes. There's just too many calls coming in, too many parents, too many students, too many teachers, faculty, security. We needed to have a direct communication with the schools to continue to have access to the information that was critical for our responses, public safety. And we're continuing now. We've installed all radios into all schools here in Kent County. The system is active and running, and now we're working to connect the camera systems for those radios back into our 911 dispatch center, which will, again, allow us to get that real-time, live information to provide the best security we can to those students here throughout Kent County. We've worked through some innovation, as we mentioned before, in our investigative bureau. Everything that we've seen now, and I think I mentioned it to you in a previous conversation, is technology-based. You know, I'm wearing a smartwatch, a smart ring, I've got a smartphone in my pocket, I've got a car with an infotainment system. Everywhere I go, if someone wants to track where I was, I've got four or five different pieces of technology to use. Well, that hinders our investigations, and we have to have the technology to process all that technology that we're wearing and using. So it is something that we've looked into. We're looking into utilizing some software that will kind of bundle all that information into kind of a real-time crime info intelligence piece of software, and then trying to use better means and technology to figure out who's processing that information and data. Typically, we had assigned law enforcement officers as deputies, but we Typically, we had assigned law enforcement officers as deputies, but we feel that there's a better way to do that by necessarily having others process that technology and then providing reporting back to our detectives. So, we're using all the software and technology that's available for us to kind of capture that data, because the amount of data that's coming in right now is just really overwhelming for law enforcement in general, not just for our agency, but across the country. And then we've worked through last year, significant facility upgrades to be in compliance with our accreditation. I know our accreditation was supposed to be presented earlier today and there's a change of schedule at the last minute, but that's something that we're truly proud of. That was a significant load and accomplishment for all of our staff to redo policies, procedures, security enhancements throughout our facility to find us in compliance with a national, not nationally, a state-level accreditation process. We wanted to just touch on that as well, too. And that puts me three minutes over, I think, my allotted time, but myself and the sheriff would be more than willing to answer any questions that you had on that presentation.
I'm going to guess this group has some questions. So, thank you for that presentation. Let's start with you, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Under Sheriff Murrow, Sheriff, appreciate you being here today. I just got one question, it's kind of three-pronged, though. When it comes to the clearance rate, congratulations on meeting the goal. The remainder that's left, what tends to be the longest time period that they can go before we either say, "We're not going to solve this," or "We're going to keep it on"? And what is the driving thing within your structure as a department? Is budget, labor, that determines the quickness of getting to those?
We don't typically close any complaint without it being solved. It's always reviewed by a supervisor and that information is always provided to the detective, so it may be a closed complaint. Because we may close something today that we make an arrest on six weeks from now that then goes back and solves 5, 10, 15 crimes. So, cases are typically never closed and not worked. They're just closed for informational purposes at that point, but they're always active in our mind trying to solve everything that we can.
They will be put into a category where there's no active leads, so that we're not constantly shifting through every open crime, though. So, if there's a new lead on a case, we can go back and get it. I forgot to introduce at least two people in the room. I looked one way and not the other, so Lindsey and Matt, could you guys stand up? I am so sorry. Chief Deputy Cole and Lieutenant Grocer, you guys know them, but I didn't...
We see them all the time.
Yes, yeah. I looked one way and not the other and it's been bugging me the whole time he was talking.
All right. Commissioner Ponstein, any follow-up? Was that... Okay. Commissioner Peckler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a little nitty-gritty stats question on the average response time. Is that a mean, which means it would be pulled up by really long, or is that a median?
It is a...
So, like 50% of the calls are quicker than the number that you showed?
Yes, 50% of the calls. If you go back to the graph that you put, which is the average for each, that, yes, we have some extremely long...
Yeah.
...response times that are out there. Could be an hour in some cases and then some very low, you happen to trip on. Oh, I happen to be in the right place at the right time, so, yes.
Sure, perfect, that's great. And then the follow-up to that is, when we look at the difference between the contracted and the non-contracted service areas, it looked like to be about three minutes in the difference for the priority-two calls. Is that a significant time? I mean, I can imagine it is, right? When we think about like what three minutes means in that kind of situation.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, kind of like you mentioned, too, some of those may be significantly longer, those priority-two calls, that may be a 40-minute time, which is dragging that out. So, it's not a three-minute average. You can't really look at it that way. We're not able to provide that three-minute average to every single call. There's many calls that come in that are 20, 30, 40, 60 minutes before we can get a response out there. So, it's very difficult to say it's a three-minute, because nobody wants to wait 20, 40, 60 minutes for a call for service, but it is definitely an average and not all of that represents a three-minute wait time.
Commissioner Boojak.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Under Sheriff Murrow, that was an excellent, excellent presentation. And your ability to provide all that information with the level of understanding that you showed us today, shows that you're fully engaged and definitely involved day-to-day. And the Kent County Sheriff's Department is certainly the number-one sheriff's department in the state of Michigan. It is the envy of all other sheriff's departments. And the statistics that you provided today show that. You consistently exceed the national averages. And how is it that we do that? We do that through good leadership. And so, we have a great sheriff who has been a leader now for many, many years and has, with her dedication, earned the trust and respect of all the sheriffs in the department. And so, you go forward. And that combined with the resources provided by the Kent County Board of Commissioners and the leadership here at Kent County and our administrator who works closely with you to assure that you have the financial needs addressed and the planning for the future, you know. I believe that this Kent County Sheriff's Department is heading not only in the right direction, but should be looked at as one of the best, if not in the state, in the country. So, thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I do have one comment on that. We work really, really hard to make sure every member of our team understands their role as serving the community and their role on our team and how they support the sheriff's office, which is how we've been able to sustain the changeover that's happened in law enforcement, you know, people leaving the industry, but yet still building that very solid team with a very deep bench. As I introduce new leaders in the department, know that they're all working very hard at sustaining the leadership at the sheriff's department. If any one of us aren't in this picture, we still have it because of all their hard work every single day. We have a tremendous staff, right from the first-day deputy all the way up to, I used to say 30 years, but we don't have too many 30-year people anymore, so it's 25-year people now. But, thank you. Appreciate that.
Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. And thank you, under sheriff and sheriff. First of all, I think it's really cool that you found a picture of Commissioner Antor in his uniform here for the presentation. That's awesome. We have an ongoing conversation about public safety, so I could talk for hours, but I want to ask specifically about the school safety pieces. I know we've made some good progress there. I know the sad reality from your department's perspective is that sometimes when there's an incident, we do what we can do to prevent, not just in schools, but anywhere, but a lot of times you guys are trying to mitigate loss as opposed to completely prevent it. But, is there anything else we can do for prevention or support from our perspective as the Board of Commissioners? I know the districts have initiatives where they come with school resource officer requests. We've done the radios with the ARPA funds. But what else could we be doing from our perspective to help support you guys in that work, particularly to our students?
Yeah. And I think this aligns, and Brian talked about it for just a moment, there's this concept of real-time crime and it really, it's a buzzword to include being able to evaluate all available information when it comes out, when it comes in. And this will really have a multifaceted impact. So, it's not just information in a critical incident, but it's information in terms of what's being talked about in social media on the days leading up to what could be a critical incident. And having the resources to tie that to the right people, having the resources to use technology to solve incremental things that are happening prior to like the big critical incident in a school, but then also to mitigate the critical incident that might not be the active shooter, but might be the gun on campus, or the gun in the parking lot, or the fight that happened at the game that then impacts the safety of the school. So, that technology piece, I really just can't even emphasize it enough. We've got to have the mechanisms to evaluate the information. And we do have some investments. We are moving forward with a couple of key projects on that, but you're going to hear us talk about that more and more often. You can only have so many bodies, but when you've invested in technology in the right places, you really go a long way to help make those bodies force multiplier, I guess, is the way to put it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And I'd just encourage you, I know you guys will keep us updated on where you are and what we can do to support that. I think we have to continue to be proactive about what we do to keep our kids safe in particular.
And making sure we have community alignment. So, school districts need to really work in concert with the public safety, whoever that public safety is, and then public safety all needs to work together to have similar systems so that we can all help each other. And we're working very hard on all of those. We meet consistently with all the security staff from all the schools, but we really are a very proactive community on that. Doesn't mean that we're, you know, we're immune from these tragedies. It means that we will be at least prepared for these tragedies if they do happen.
Thank you. Thanks for what you guys are doing.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just heard a couple of times the word proactive and there's many communities that are, you know, starting to measure those response times, not in minutes, but in hours, which is just a terrible thing for those communities. So, while we, you know, should continue to work to ensure we don't have those time response times slip, I'm just struck by how proactive the sheriff's department is. And that really, I think, is making the difference. You all are proactive in training, making sure that is done well, you're proactive in community engagement, proactive in stopping those pattern crimes like we heard about. It was just a great presentation and great reminder of the fantastic work that you all are doing and I just want to say thanks for that. I wanted particularly to ask about the coordination piece amongst different police forces. And, you know, we border, you know, a number of counties here in Kent County and their sheriff's department. We have a number of, you know, city police and departments that, you know, require, you know, coordination. And then you had mentioned, you know, the upcoming political event this weekend, providing support for events like that. And we've seen recently, you know, some events where it seems like from the outside that the coordination between, you know, law enforcement agencies was not very good. And so, I'm just curious if there's anything we as a Board of Commissioners can do to help support, you know, improving that. From my perspective, it seems like it's good, but if there's things that we can do to improve that coordination amongst all those departments, I'd love to know.
Jump in if I miss something on this. So, you know, you have to think of it in layers, right? So, we just talked about the public safety radio that was implemented in the school system. That was built on a foundation that was established with the public safety network that was put in place by the surcharge on the 911. We have a network that takes, you know, all law enforcement, all response, medical response units, fire departments are all on one radio system. And I cannot point to a more important thing than being able to talk to each other. And then doing that on a very regular basis and having mechanisms in place. So, we have two dispatch centers in Kent County. We work very closely. We are two halves of a pie. And there's nothing that happens in GR that we don't have up on the board in the county and vice versa, so we can help each other. And it's actually even a little bit better than being all one, because you don't have the ability to cover for each other if you're all one. Now, you've got to go to a neighboring county, which, you know, we have Ottawa, we have smaller counties, I guess is the way to put that. So, that key, talking to each other, but then it's really incumbent on the funding bodies to not be selfish in the way that they're thinking of their part. Like, you don't have to just cover the calls for service that are in the township. We have to really conceive of the overall capacity of the county at any given time to manage whatever might be happening. So, we talked to, literally, the first-day deputy gets the orientation, like you serve our entire community. Your normal place that you'll go for calls for service might be Byron, or it might be Gaines, or it might be Grattan Township, but you serve everybody and we will go to where the need is. And as you spread that philosophy right from that every human being that works for the sheriff's department, all their chiefs are doing that in their communities, too. That helps the mental load of how are we going to coordinate these services and how we can best serve. And so, you build it ground up, you give the mechanisms there, but then having enough resources to do what you need to do is key to the execution. And so, that's why we talk so much ahead of how long it takes us to get these resources and make sure that they're all lined up. And you've all been very, very effective about the way you've added resources for us, as we've told you we need them to get ahead of things. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to, again, thank you for your presentation, thank you for your detailed answers on previous questions. I wanted to go back to the use-of-force slide, the percentage, the less than half a percent, and largely thinking, because I was trying to remember when we voted to fund the virtual, the VITRA, or I've, system. And I was just wondering, have we noticed a, has the percentage been maintained? Has it decreased? Has it increased? And I realize it's still new enough that we may not see those impacts. And also, just because you're doing something well doesn't mean you shouldn't also get new tools to continue to improve your service delivery. Just wanting to see, are we seeing some results from that?
Yeah. So, we are seeing results. Like, it's not just the VERTRA, though. It's that de-escalation training, some mental health awareness and preparedness. We're able to communicate with people better, hopefully preventing any force from being used at all beforehand. So, the VERTRA is able to give us, again, scenarios that we may not be able to recreate on a mass base for all of our staff, and that is a great tool. But the simulation is not the only component. Really, it is those skills that we've been teaching and training our staff at with the bias-based training, really how to communicate well and to empathize with the community that they're serving. So, the number of use-of-force incidents for the critical force incidents has seen a slight decline. That percentage is still well below that one, half of 1%, but the types of force, we're seeing that being less and less, significant use of force.
That's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I have a few questions, but they're pretty technical and hopefully you can answer them easily. You referred early on to specialty units, and I just wonder if you could give us an example of what your specialty units are?
Yep. So, I'll go to some of the specialty units that are going to be used here this weekend. So, we have a tactical team. There's just better training to use some of the armored vehicles that we have used and acquired through funding with board support. And then our mobile field force team. Then we also have a dive team, a marine patrol. We have multiple different units that our department may not be the only one, like our K-9 team. Kentwood and Grand Rapids has one, but there's other agencies with SPARAs and LOLs that don't. So, we have quite a few specialty teams, drones, which I think you're seeing now. Kentwood, Wyoming Walker, Grand Rapids are all starting to have their own, but we were one of the four front agencies here in Michigan to have one, but it's just becoming those other tools. So, anytime that we see or have something that other agencies don't necessarily have, they're calling on us. And it may not be considered a specialty team, but resource-wise, technology, we have a lot of technology that these other agencies don't have. So, our detectives or investigators are really specialists in what they're doing and they may reach out and work with those other agencies that don't have those capabilities to help solve crime.
Wonderful. And then the radio network, I really thank you for that explanation. I feel like that's, I understand it better than I ever have, how that school radio network works. My question is this, was it a massive re-education effort for the schools? I mean, people are used to calling 911, like that's what they do instinctively. If we're telling them, "Don't call 911, use the radio..."
We're not telling them that.
Oh, you're not?
No.
Nope. So, we absolutely always ask anyone to call 911 anytime there's a critical incident. You know, when our call center lights up like a Christmas tree, we obviously know something's occurring. So, we're going to start sending resources there what's, as soon as we get those calls. But, this will give us a second piece of information. So, we still want 911 to call. The way we've trained those radios, we've put together training videos, QR code on every radio, they train their staff, we make our staff available to go out before school starts every year to make sure the system's working, to make sure the staff in the office know how to use the system, but it is just a extra component. We don't want to put anyone at risk to use the system if the incident's occurring where that radio's installed. It is just a direct piece of communication that is the best route to communicate with us when something's occurring.
Okay. So, it does involve a lot of training, but there's no like either-or question with it?
Yeah. And I, so just to kind of color that in a little bit, so the radios are installed in places that we would think are...
Can you get closer to the microphone?
The radios are installed in places that we think will be secure in the school, but the first person who contacts any kind of violent absolutely should call 911. But, system-wide, what normally happens after that call has started a little bit is, because of the way 911 calls are queued, you don't know which order they came in. 911 calls are queued, you don't know which order they came in. So let's say the second account that's in that school is now where do they move to after we first saw them? And where did they go after that? And where did we go after that? So if everybody's in queue on 911 and they say, okay, I saw them in hallway B and I saw them in hallway C, without being able to get that information to the officer very quickly and in order, it can become very confusing. So the radio system helps with that secondary information and helps get the information literally over the radio. The officer will hear it coming in as they're responding to it, as opposed to somebody answering 911, taking down the information and then going to the officer. So it just kind of speeds that second, third, fourth, fifth communication. But it still generally will trigger with a 911 call, although it could trigger in that office, it likely will trigger with a 911 call.
Great, thank you. And then my last question is, you referred to that spike in crime, which, you know, looked pretty dramatic. You also referred to all the car thefts, which, you know, we've all been hearing and reading about. Do you sort of equate the spike in crime with that or is that too easy? Is it, it's too easy?
Yeah. It's too easy. There's a lot of significant crime that's occurring, again, that changed the age, or that raised the age and the change in appearance citation. We're just not housing lower level offenders in our jail anymore and they typically are re-offending, which we're seeing then that repeat crime and then our crime rates going up. So I know it was well-intentioned to, you know, provide other services or means to treat low-end offenders, but those low-end offenders are continuing to repeat their criminal activity, which is then raising our crime rates on all crime categories.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Ben, I think that I was, in that picture, I was one of the kids with a tie. Pretty sure that was our
It's the last time you wore a tie, isn't it?
I think that was our, anyhow, thanks for coming in. When Roger used to run Rockford ambulance, I think he still does, he bought into a software program that helped him put vehicles in areas that were determined through the software of where they're more likely to have problems. And he was very impressed with that. And I was wondering if there's any application for law enforcement.
Well, there is an application for that, but I think everyone here would feel underserved if we only stayed in the hotspots of crime. So it's very difficult to do that. So we are aware, those pattern crimes and the dashboards that are available to the community, we know where crime's occurring. We are making sure our staff's aware of it, but we also have to be visible in the other parts of the area in the county where crime isn't occurring. So it's a, it's a difficult balance that we try to walk the line as to being responsible for reducing crime in areas that we know crime's occurring, but also providing those services across the county as well.
Seems like more logical application for someone that's in the health arena, first responder ambulance. It seems like that might work pretty good for them.
Yep. And our CAD system does do recommendations based on who's the closest available law enforcement unit to a call for service. So whether it's us or MSP or neighboring jurisdiction, that technology is there, but we just don't center our cars particularly in that area. Now, if we know there's pattern crimes that are occurring, we may do investigative or special investigation or special detail to proactively try to reduce crime in that area, but we can't just focus on the areas that crime are occurring.
Yeah, I understand. Well, good luck Saturday, too.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Sheriff, you indicated that the 911 system and our dual operations working well. Is there anything there that you wish would be better? Is it, is it, is it working well? If I call from my cellphone, are you able to, is this go, is it directed properly? I'm just curious, because we did make the decision to continue a dual system.
Yeah, I, you know, I personally, obviously, the technology involved in doing call answering and dispatch is, you know, you have to stay ahead of that technology. It generally needs to turn over every five to six years. So we will probably need a new CAD that can incorporate more of the technology that's coming into the center now with video and, you know, texting to 911 and trying to stay ahead of that. So you will have a, we will not have a CAD investment, but the dispatch authority will have a CAD investment that they're going to have to make for that. Functionally, I think, generally speaking, it works pretty well, but the technical staff that needs to do implementation in terms of the technology in the car, the technology in the center, we probably needed an improvement on that. That probably is coming in the future to just stay ahead of it because everything Brian talked about, and I don't know what you do with a smart ring, but I'll just leave that right now. That, all that technology needs to be addressed in the dispatch center. So we probably are going to have to do more with that and dispatch, but keeping it separate into two halves has worked really, really well for that coverage for each other. And I am not a big fan of consolidating it. I still hear that in our community. I know it seems like you'll save a lot of resources by having one infrastructure as opposed to two infrastructures, but that backup need will push the cost into a different direction, in my opinion. So I think it's good, but I think requiring that they stay connected to each other is really, really important, too. So working through a process together is necessary. Does that answer your question?
It did. I appreciate that and I appreciate that, you know, to tell you that they're, you know, you're looking forward and you mentioned ties into the next thing is that you're looking at the master plan for expansion and renovations and of course, looking at a future CAD system here and changes.
Right.
It ties into that as well. But you have the point seventy-five, point seven-five mils that's assessed. I don't know how long, you know, for building type things. Does that apply to this at all?
No. So the seventy-five mils for correctional facility, is that what you mean?
Yes.
So I think we do need to revisit that issue because, keep in mind, that was set in, what, ninety-one? Ninety, ninety-one. And corrections industry in general has changed very, very significantly. So a deep dive on that would probably be a good idea to put on the commissioner's radar because it's going to be important that we recognize the change in corrections since nineteen ninety to what it is right now. The dispatch authority, though, that runs on a 911 surcharge. So that funding is flat, just so everybody's aware of that, is sufficient right now and it's sufficient as we project it out, but it is flat.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Sheriff and team, it's good to see you here. I had a couple of questions, if I may. This is the first year that the gun law changes that were passed list last year are fully into effect. I'm curious as to whether the county has used specifically the red flag gun law.
So our sheriff's office has not. I believe there is at least one incident through the Seventeenth Circuit Court where it has been used, but the sheriff's office has not been involved in those. We have been involved in making sure that there's some communication with the prosecutor's office, the courts and the judges, and are prepared to handle that, but we haven't had an incident reported to us at this point.
Okay. Just as, you know, there was a couple of my colleagues that asked about what we can do, additional resources, education. When I, I have seen a lot of studies, a lot of examples from other states that also implemented red flag laws. And what I noticed is that the number one factor as to, that points to the success of the law is the public knowing about it, so that it can actually be used when it needs to be used. And so that might be something that we, we as in the board, might consider as to whether we want to use some resources to help you all educate the public, so that when, if it has to be used, that people know that it's there as a resource.
So, so we do, and again, we work very closely within Kent County with all the other law enforcement agencies and the family court who's involved in implementing this. And there were educational materials prepared for people who are contacting family court to say, okay, I have an issue that I'm trying to work through. And there are many elements to most issues. It's not generally, I just think they need to have their guns. There's typically a mental health issue. There's, so when we contact somebody, we try to problem solve and use the tool that is best indicated. More often than not, it doesn't include going to the house and doing force. More often than not, if you hit it soon enough, you can work through all the resolutions and there's an outcome that's effective for the family who's asking for services, the person who needs the services, but they're educated that this is an option.
Okay. And then for my second question, Commissioner Legrand kind of took it a bit, but I'll do kind of a follow-up to that. Would it then, it sounded like what you were saying was that a lot of the, because I'm curious as to why we're seeing this, at the very least, not decrease in crime in our county. And it sounds like you're saying increase, continued increase. And it sounds like you're saying that a lot of it has to do with low level offenders. My guess is based off of our previous conversations, a lot of those are juveniles or underage people. Is that the case? Is, would you say then that are the reason why we're not, or one of the factors why we're not decreasing in crime is because of those juvenile low-level offenders?
So, yes, that, very specifically, there is not places in our system for long-term treatment for juveniles who are fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, involved in very, very serious pattern crimes like car theft, weapons offenses, assaults, to be in somebody's care for a long period of time, receive treatment. So what is happening is they generally, and I'll use the example of somebody driving a car that was involved in a fatal incident, that, that young person released within several hours of the time they were incarcerated, even though they're involved in a very serious offense, because that's the way the system's built to return each juvenile back to their family as quickly as possible. They might be, they might be held in detention for thirty days and they might even be adjudicated and determined that they need a very long-term placement, like a six-month placement. But because there are not long-term placements available readily, they end up back out in our community very quickly without that treatment and re-offending. And so it's not as easy to say it's the car theft, but car thefts are often a component of it. But so are weapons and this felonious assault that's happening, the weapon, you know, we're just, we're having gunshots at different events, things like that, that these individuals, and I don't want to just say juveniles because they, a lot of them graduate into the adult system before they end up back incarcerated. But we have a group of people who we're not meeting their needs and they are re-offending. It isn't everybody who was involved in some of the, you know, our incarcerations went down sixty percent. Our bookings went down sixty percent, but our beds are not sixty percent less full. And, and I think that really has to say, are you getting somebody early enough? Well, we probably had more people coming in and out than we needed to have come in and out because they're not coming in and staying. But at some point, you have, we have to identify that circle of people who were not meeting their needs and were not doing enough to prevent their criminal behavior and to help them with whatever critical thing is going on with them that they're continuing down this path. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I really love the fact that you use multiple times the phrase, we're not meeting their needs.
Yeah.
And I think that that's something that I would like to reiterate to some of my colleagues, to the chairs. You know, as we talk about how law enforcement is going to look into the future, I think we need to ask ourselves whether increasing mileage rates to jails, whether increasing funding to law enforcement, whether that's going to actually help them as much as addressing the needs of some of our, especially our youth. Are they getting the education that they need? Do they have the healthcare that they need? Do they have a family environment at home with two parents who can take care of those situations before they escalate? If we have situations where family members are working multiple jobs, where people or parents are working odd schedules, where they can't address those family needs, we're going to continue to see these issues, is my opinion. And so I'd love to continue this conversation with some of my colleagues, with yourself, into the future and see how we can advocate and address some of these things at our level, but really, I think, at the state and federal level. So thank you for that.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone else, so again, thank you to our sheriff and under sheriff for your presentation this morning. Obviously, thank you for all the hard work that you do and for the rest of your department that have showed up to support you today. I concur in my colleagues' observation that we have the best sheriff's department in the state. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item of business is our public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the commission this time, it is with respect to items that are on the agenda only. Yeah. So I know that we have some sign up first, so I'll turn it over to Rod to identify those who have signed up to address. Again, if you state your name and address and the item that you wish to address, you have up to three minutes. And then after we go through those who have signed up, I'll see if there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to address us.
All right, our first public comment is Tanya Kraus-Falen. And on deck, we have Jonathan Stoltman.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair. The last, since the last time I met with all of you, there have been some changes on the Kent County Office of the Board. And as of yesterday, I was voted as the president chair of the Board. So depending on what you do today, it may be the shortest tenure of a chair in Board history, or it may be the beginning of a really wonderful relationship with the county. To that extent, I would like to talk about three things: improvement, integrity, and independence. With respect to improvement, since the report came out from the national study of the Office, both the Office and the Board have sought to address the concerns that were raised and significant improvements are being made within the Office's leadership, policy, and implementation of those policies. With respect to integrity, since that report came out and the county's intention was made clear to go to a county office and discontinue contracting with this office, the Office has acted with the utmost integrity in continuing to represent zealously and competently the indigent constituency that you represent. As a whole, the Office has done that while the Damocles sword of inevitable dissolution of the Office has hung over their head. And I think that that should not be ignored. Independence, whether it's irony or serendipity that we're on the agenda as, on the same day that the Sheriff's Department gave their annual report, it's not lost on me, nor should it be lost on any of you. While the Sheriff's Department does their good work of keeping our county safe and providing effective law enforcement, the information they provided to you today should signify to you why the independence of a defender's office is so important. Crime rate is going up. The needs of the individuals are not being met through the county Sheriff's Department. That's something that, under the new MIDC standards, our Office provides and will continue to work to do. The fact that the majority of defender's offices across the country have gone to a county program is no reason that this county should do so. Yes, private defender's offices are a minority in the country, but for fifty-plus years, an independent defender's office in this county has been a shining example of indigent defense. And it can continue to do so. I urge you to vote no today. And I urge you, within your control and capacity and to the extent that you can, to urge that the private defender's office continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Stoltman. And next, we have Will Antonides.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jonathan Stoltman. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I am the Director of the Opioid Policy Institute here in Grand Rapids. I have a PhD in psychology and have worked as an addiction scientist for over a decade. I have occasionally volunteered as a community member of the Kent County Opioid Task Force that worked on the budget before you this morning. Today, I'm representing the Opioid Policy Institute and no other organizations that I mentioned. As the Commissioners know, the opioid settlement money presents our county with a rare opportunity to reinvest in addiction prevention, harm reduction treatment, and recovery services, all highlighted in the report. But due to our flawed, though well-intentioned process, the proposed budget to you today does not meet those aims. I urge you to vote no on approving this budget until the feedback from the Michigan State University Technical Assistance Report that is focused on people who use drugs and people of color is finalized this November. That's highlighted in the report. Without this data from Michigan State, locking in the budget for two years will be a disaster for our community and a betrayal of the most vulnerable among us. This report plainly shows what happens when the voices like those are missing in this planning process. On page ten of the proposed budget, item number six in the table, there's a highlight on syringe service programs. Syringe service programs are evidence-based public health approaches to reduce disease transmission and provide an entry rate to treatment for those using drugs. It is also stated priority in the county, yet, as you can see, there is no funding in the first two years of the proposed budget. Even though we have the world-class Grand Rapids Red Project here in our community ready to do that work, even though people who use drugs regularly interact with the Red Project and use these life-saving services, to not fund them is unacceptable. There is also a budget allocation for $800,000 in no-bid, non-competitive funding to county jails. It is the only money that you'll see in the report that is allocated to treatment. This smacks of corruption and is also unacceptable. We must not allocate money like this based on non-competitive grants. There are many other examples of misalignment between priorities and the proposed budget highlighted today and the need for including these voices before approving the budget. We also, of course, need an, excuse me, an open grant application process before spending this money. We need to wait for the Michigan State University Needs Assessment and Technical Assistant Report that's due this November. And it makes no sense to spend this money before having those results. Why should we not wait a few months before spending those results, especially since it's locking in two years of funding? The money was awarded to our community because of thousands of lives lost in Grand Rapids since this crisis started twenty years ago. Again, we have a unique opportunity to listen to these voices and make sure they're reflected in our budget. We owe it to them to do better, especially for the most vulnerable among us. We owe it to them to do better, especially for the most vulnerable among us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Will Antonides, and following him is Laura Joyce.
Good morning. My name is Will Antonides. I'm a resident of Cascade Township and a legal assistant with the Kent County Office of the Defender. I stand in opposition to Resolution eighty-two, the creation of a county public defender's office. This morning, you were present, being presented with the same two options you were presented with in May: a county office or a full roster system. There are several issues going, with going to a county defender's system, which you will hear about from many people this morning. I just want to point out that the timing still seems rushed. In May, the Commission thought it was nearly impossible to have an office running by October. What has changed? Also, the newly-created independent council does not lay out where the council will be housed, who will staff it, or how it will be paid for. As to the other option you were being forced to consist, consider, a full roster system, it is important that the Commission know and understand that the forty-seven roster attorneys cannot, and many have indicated will not, be able to absorb all the cases that our Office handles. Further, many of these attorneys do not have the infrastructure to manage such a volume. Several work from home and do not have support staff. Let's remember who is at the center of this: not the county administrator, not the Commission, not our Office, not me, not a single person in this room. The persons who are at the center of this discussion are the clients we serve, the vulnerable, for whatever reason, need and deserve quality representation as they move through the justice system. Aside from the questions you have heard from your constituents, from us, and indeed, from your own consciences, what is the gain from creating an office out of thin air in two and a half months? Rather than the false choice you are being presented with today, what if there were another option, or two? The simplest plan would be to instruct the county administrator to renew the contract with the KCOD. You have heard from our new chairperson about the changes the Board intends to make. These changes will address the concerns about accountability, transparency, trust, and with a little innovation, leveraging county resources and systems. Another option would be to permit the creation of a new nonprofit. Nowhere in the NAPD report or from the administrator have we heard complaints about the services of our Office. If the county administration is unwilling and unable to work with KCOD's current management, allow us the opportunity to form a new entity with new leadership, yet with the same quality practitioners and professionals. This morning, I'm asking you to step back from the gaslit decision you were being asked to make. I respectfully request that you reject the proposal as presented to you today and adopt a third way forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Laura Joyce, and on deck is Christopher Denny.
Good morning. My name is Laura Joyce. I live in, on Morris, in Heritage Hill, and I'm the Deputy Director of the Kent County Office of the Defender. And I had hoped that I wouldn't have to speak to you again, but here we are. Kent County is a unique place. If you ask any attorney who practices here, the first thing you'll hear is what a convivial and congenial bar we have. And this is good. It fosters mentorship and ease of practice, but it also really exemplifies the importance of having a strong adversarial and independent defender. Because when you are in a county where most things are being able to be handled with a handshake or a conversation, it really intensifies the importance of having your defenders being independent from that. And that's because there are times when that will not solve the problem. And you need to have a office that has the independence to be able to fight however they need to fight, to stand up for the people that they represent. And you have that now in an independent nonprofit. We have with us hard-working, compassionate, committed individuals that this county is lucky to have sitting here and over there this morning, working. We, and I, have been honored to work with them and to work with our community members. And we are telling you, they are telling you, that this is not the best way for us to operate, that a county office is not the way that we need to best serve our clients. The people that do the work and unquestionably do it well are standing in front of you and telling you that this is not the way. We want to maintain our independence as a nonprofit. We want to stay as an independent department from the county so we can have at our disposal all of the fire and adversarial energy that we need to properly represent the people that come to us in their greatest hour of need. This is a moment in time for you. Some of you will maybe move on from these offices, some of you may stay here for a long time, but make no question that the decision you make today will reverberate for decades through this county, and it will undoubtedly change and irrevocably alter the face of the criminal legal system in this county. So this is not a small decision, this is not a light decision. And if you sit there this morning with a hesitation, with a doubt, with a question, then the answer is no. I ask you to vote no for me, citizen, lifelong resident, a person who desires and the most vulnerable in her community are, have equitable and just access to our system. I ask you to vote no for the people sitting here, for the people working over there who deserve the dignity of security and their work as they labor. And finally, I ask for the community, for the most vulnerable, for those who deserve a brilliant, competent, and independent attorney on the worst day of their life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Christopher Denny, and on deck is Abby Blanding.
Good morning, Commissioner Stack. Good morning, Commissioners. Christopher Denny with the Kent County Office of the Defender. When this body last was asked to pass on this resolution, the word of the day was trust. Many of you noted that this, the way this proposal was created and presented failed to engender trust. Trust in the wisdom of the proposal, trust in the process that brought it before you, and trust in the timeframe in which you were given to consider it. And here we stand today, eleven weeks later, and you are being asked to vote on the exact same resolution, word for word, that you saw on May second. The FAQ document you were given repeats the same information before and doesn't address any of the concerns that you noted back on May second. And I want you to remember, you heard from stakeholders, community leaders, community members, and not one of those people voiced support for this resolution. In the meantime, I wanted to tell you a little bit about what KCOD has been doing since the last time we were here on May second. In that time, we have been assigned over twelve hundred new cases, five hundred and eighty-seven misdemeanors, and six hundred and twenty-five new felony cases that we have handled in, in our office. We have had trial acquittals, lesser charge verdicts, dismissals based on our advocacy and work, and countless other resolutions. At no point has county administration or the state MIDC expressed any concern with the quality of representation that we are providing. We have reiterated and followed formal policies regarding discipline, complaint resolution, and case management. We have continued our work with GVSU in addressing inclusivity in our policies and culture and developing a strategic plan to carry that out. Our Board has elected a new president with a commitment and a plan to improve their oversight and involvement, and we have met with the administration in the spirit of good faith, open communication, transparency, and a desire to show our commitment and value to this community. But what should really speak to you more than anything that I can say today is the fact that despite having a cloud of uncertainty thrust above their heads with their careers and their jobs, not one person quit. They didn't leave their clients behind, they didn't leave their coworkers behind. Your stated goal was that you wanted excellent representation for indigent clients in Kent County. Well, I'm here to tell you, you have that. You have, you already have a dedicated, committed, and talented group of professionals serving your constituents. Twelve hundred new cases since May second alone tells you that even this administration knows that. We have been trusted twelve hundred more times since May second to provide, to protect the constitutional rights of Kent County citizens in this county. Trust us today and vote no on this resolution and urge the continued use of Kent County Office of the Defender. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Abby Blanding, and following her is Desiree Benedict. I'm sorry, I can't read the last.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Abby Blanding. I am a lifelong Kent County resident. I took nearly twenty years to figure out what I wanted to do with my life, and I uprooted my family's whole livelihood in my mid-late thirties to go to law school with one purpose: so that I could work at the Kent County Office of the Defender. I walked into our first career fair with one resume in hand. I was the first one in the door, and I walked up to Laura, and I said, "I came to law school because I want to work for you." And I meant it. The people we serve, they have been arrested by county employees, they are being prosecuted by county employees, and they are being sentenced by county employees. What makes any of you think that they would believe for a second a county employee defending them? You will absolutely undermine any little bit of trust that remains in the criminal justice system. It is so strained already. Don't take the last little bit they have independence away. That's all.
Thank you.
Desiree, and following her is Kim Talent.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Desiree Benedict Nader. I'm a resident of District Seven, and I'm an attorney with the Kent County Office of the Defender. It is incredibly challenging for me to fit an argument within three minutes. You can just ask the judges and prosecutors across the street. I'm also acutely aware that what I say in these three minutes may have no difference on the decision that you all make today, but that has never stopped me before, so here we go. I could talk today about what it's been like for me and my peers since this proposal was raised, but what I'd rather focus on today is my colleagues, who have, without exception, continued to fight for and protect our community during what I can describe as the most difficult period I've experienced as a public defender. I can speak about the interns who started the week that the county came to our office and told us that they are no longer going to contract with us, yet have still showed up, week after week, to learn from an internship program that has lit the flame in young public defenders for decades. I can speak about the attorneys who have stood in court and advocated for the release of individuals that they don't know they will represent come their trial, who are, as we speak, across the street doing the same thing. I can speak about our mitigation team who have continued to ensure that clients not only have accesses to the resources they need to be productive members of our community, but have continued to bring a clinical perspective to the courts to ensure that every defendant is seen as a whole person and not only for the allegations that are brought against them. Of our investigators who have tirelessly sought justice and fairness, and our support staff, while faced with uncertainty, who have spoken up on behalf of our Office and continue to thanklessly make sure that our Office meets the needs of our nearly seven thousand clients. Not one of my colleagues has walked away from the Office of the Defender. Why is that? It's not because we enjoy being employed by a target of an unnecessary and unexpected takeover. It's because we believe in our Office, even with its issues. We believe in the work that we do, and above all else, we believe in our clients. I'm asking you the same questions I asked you the last time we met. Have you been shown and are you convinced that creating this new office is necessary, that it is appropriate? While it might not feel like it, you have power here today. Your community has trusted you with it, and I ask that you use it. We can do better than what is being proposed. It's not lost on me that at any of these many meetings, I have never heard a community member or individual speak in favor of this proposal, but we've heard hours and hours of not only my peers at the Office, but other community partners ask and plead that you vote against it. Is that lost on you? KCOD is this county's indigent defense and has been for nearly twice my lifetime, whether this Board sees it or not. This county has had a hallmark of indigent defense for fifty years, and today, this county has an opportunity to continue setting standards across this state and nation for public defense. For myself and for so many others at KCOD and in our community, I'm asking that you vote no. I'm asking that you listen to me and that you listen to us and that you listen to them and that you please vote no.
Thank you.
Next is Kim Talent, and on deck is Sierra Hatfield.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Kim Talent. I'm a resident of Kentwood, and I'm a trial attorney with KCOD. One of the things I've heard is that this county model proposal is to ensure zealous advocacy and to better attract and retain young talent. I like to think I'm part of that young, desired talent. And one of the most important things to me in deciding employment was just, was trusting and believing in my employer. It's why I'm here, it's why I've stayed. Now, I've always been told, you praise in public and you criticize in private, but I have not been given the opportunity to share my criticism privately, so I do apologize for this. But with how this proposal has come about, I don't feel able to trust and believe in my possible future employer. I've been told I can apply for my current job over at the county, but I don't know who my boss will be, I don't know the structure of representation, I don't know the nature of mentorship and development for a young attorney like me. I don't know the mental health and well-being plan for when I get stressed out by my cases. The plan for building a, I don't know, the plan to build a positive workplace culture. I don't even know what my health plan would be like. And for a young family, that's important to me. On a side note, you're being told this is either a county or a roster proposal, and notably, the roster attorneys are not eligible for public service loan forgiveness, and you will not attract young, talented attorneys if we are not eligible for that program. Now, we've heard a lot and plenty of criticisms, so I want to turn to publicly praising KCOD because I don't think that's been shared with you guys nearly enough. I've only been at KCOD since February, so my list is limited, but I found KCOD full of loving and caring people who are willing to go the extra mile for their clients and coworkers. On my very first day, a senior attorney sat down with me, and she just wanted to get to know me about my family, about what brought me to law school, what brought me to KCOD. We are full of caring and loving individuals. I had my first-ever jury trial not too long ago, and before which I had multiple senior attorneys going over trial strategy and discovery and rules of evidence to make sure I was properly prepared. Most of these people aren't my supervisors and had no obligation to do this, but they cared about me, my client, and our little misdemeanor cases. For my first trial, I had our deputy director next to me my entire trial day to make sure I knew what to do. For a separate trial, I was concerned about logistics, and again, someone not my supervisor was willing to be with me my entire day and give up his time to make sure I was safe and knew what to do on that day. Going back to my original point, this is important to me, to know and trust my employer. My employer has attracted some of the kindest and hardest-working coworkers I've ever met. They're people I have or want to introduce my daughter to because I know they are people I want her to look up to. I trust these people, and you should too. Trust us and vote against this county proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sierra Hatfield, and on deck is Patrice Colehouse.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Sierra Hatfield. I'm filling in for the Director of the City's Office of Equity and Engagement today. I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Autumn Eight-B, the City of Grand Rapids' contribution to support the West Michigan Welcome Plan. I had a conversation earlier this week with someone who was looking for information on how active our local government is in welcoming new Americans, and it was through that conversation that really put into perspective just how amazing the Welcome Plan is. It is active, number one, but that action is also intentionally crafted through conversations with members of the immigrant and refugee community, with the organizations that serve that community, and with the government employees who understand and also know how to navigate the policies and rules and regulations to bring those actions in a feasible and sustainable way. So, the City has been in support of the Welcome Plan since the beginning. I truly hope that this recent financial contribution is taken as a example of our continued support. I myself sit on the Welcome Plan Steering Committee, led by your fearless leaders, Chief Inclusion Officer Teresa Payne, and your Welcome Plan Coordinator Holland De La Cruz, who are two fantastic ladies who not only know how to apply an equity lens to these different initiatives, but also know how to create culturally appropriate spaces where there can be a genuine exchange of information and resources to these different communities. So like I said, I'm just here in support. I want to say the City supports our Office, specifically the Office of Equity and Engagement supports. We look forward to continuing that support. Take our money. Thanks.
Thank you.
Patrice Colehouse, and on deck is Aida Rajani Nojani.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Patrick Colehouse. I apologize for my handwriting. I live in Easttown. I, when I just left law school, I interned at the Kent County Office of the Defender. I wanted to briefly say I concur with the comments they've all made today. I think they're a fantastic office, and I have the utmost respect for them. I wanted to specifically address some concerns with the independence policy. Up until about a month ago, I worked at the Ottawa County Public Defender's Office. Administrator Vanderberg here was my boss's boss for a few years, and I wanted to thank him for being an ally to our Office. I also wanted to highlight that that's one of the reasons that I'm concerned about the independence policy here. After Mr. Vanderberg was rather abruptly removed from the Office, and there was a huge change in leadership at the county... suddenly, a lot of us at the Public Defender's Office were concerned about the future of our jobs, about how safe we were in representing our clients zealously. I am in a, I was pretty publicly and still am in a gay relationship in a county that suddenly all of the administration was cracking down on anything outside of the norm in Ottawa County. There were whole departments that lost funding because they had pride flags on their doors. This is the kind of political pressure that, when you're a county agency, you can face. And it's the kind of political pressure that I don't think the independence policy here adequately addresses. It might address, on a case-by-case basis, certain issues with individual clients or with individual decisions, but in terms of cultural decisions, in terms of the security that your staff has, in terms of the freedom that your staff has to pursue the inevitable conflict you'd have with other parts of the county, I don't believe that the policy that's been proposed here is adequate. I just wanted to make that clear from somebody who's outside of the system here, who's seen both sides of it. That's my concern at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Aida, and on deck is Daniel Allen Scott.
Good morning. Good morning, Aida Nojani. I am a resident of Kent County by choice. I don't know for how much longer, but by choice. And you've all heard from me. I am a trial attorney at the Kent County Office of the Defender, and you all know my position, and so I won't tell you again. But I want to speak to you from the words of our clients and people that I've heard in court and letters that we've received. No, because I had a lot of good experiences with my past court-appointed lawyers. They taught me more about law, and even though they are really busy due to caseloads, issues, they still do their best to represent me. I feel it would be unfair to change this matter now because it's more of a chance our attorneys will help us out and not judge us or our past mistakes or crimes representing us. It is a change. It is a change that is a chance that it's greater that the county would make things more unfair to people like us. And it would make it unfair, and it would feel like it's foul for people like us. My family and I want to thank you, the Kent County Office of the Defender, for everything that you do and are doing for me, and all of the efforts that you have done for helping me get into this program. I did a bad thing, and because of this, I need help, and you've helped me get into the program. After all of this, I want to fly free, free like the bird that I am, because of all of you, you helped me. Kent County Office of the Defender is very beneficial to people like me that can't afford an attorney or lawyers. Kent County Office of the Defender is an outstanding nonprofit group, in quotations. And I trust them for fighting on my behalf. Kent County Office of the Defender has helped me in my case in so many ways, and they helped fight for what's right. They, Kent County wants to make, wants to take over Kent County Office of the Defender and change something that's not broken. Kent County Office of the Defender is a well-oiled nonprofit group, and it don't need to be changed. These are the people that we serve. A gentleman in court yesterday said, "I was in jail for 10 days. I have epilepsy, and I haven't gotten my medication." I had jail visits on ICS, not in private rooms. These are the agencies that we're funding through our county, and we're not getting the services that are to help our clients. Those are agencies that you oversee already, that you can't guarantee transparency and accountability for, that aren't getting any better. Why take on another agency that's responsible for those things? Allow us to remain independent. Allow us to keep doing our job. Allow us to be part of the checks and balances of these other agencies. And we're willing to work with you, and we're willing to open those doors. So, say no to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final card is Daniel Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. In the name of the Lord, greet everyone and staff and citizens behind me. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for inviting the pastor to open our meeting here with a very powerful prayer. By the way, your first name means praiseworthy, so I praise you for that. I'm Daniel Allen Scott, as the clerk here told you. Longtime resident of the county. But again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm addressing the budget. And it sounds like, even being here today, that funds could be used for better law enforcement. By the way, another cause of violence is what they're teaching in our schools, public schools, that the children come from apes and monkeys. And if children are taught that, no wonder they act like animals. But I was here last time, appealed to you to not fund these shiny objects like the amphitheater, the soccer field, the aquarium. I appeal to you to instead use that money to store up food and water. Canned goods, water, that will last for a long time in one of these beautiful vacant warehouses, or several of them around the county. Because, as I mentioned, there's coming an economic crash. We cannot sustain this great indebtedness, federal, state, local level. Just recently, we've had seven power outages so far in Grand Rapids. Seven. Spend the money on infrastructure, like this. Earlier this spring, the water main broke on the southeast side, caused people to boil water. 200 homes had to do that. Along one of our fellowships on South Division, the power was out as well, so the people couldn't even boil water. They had to count on the generosity of a local supermarket. In Atlanta, early June, three water mains breaks. And as of June 8th, I don't know what it is now, but they were still without water. And then this, $185 million for a 12,000-seat amphitheater. $185 million. Nice shiny object, but I appeal to you. Economic difficulty is coming, and it'd be better to save this money, give it to the citizens, or provide perhaps food and water. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the end of the sign-up list? Okay, as I indicated earlier, if there's anyone else that wishes to address the board on matters that are on the agenda only at this time, there's another opportunity later in the meeting. You may do so now. Please identify yourself by name, where you live, and you have up to three minutes. And if not, we will then move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Baker.
Hello. I move that the Consent Agenda of today's date be forwarded on to the full board for approval.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Is it supported? Supported by Commissioner Boujack. Questions or comments on the Consent Agenda motion? I see none. This is a roll call. Mr. Clerk.
On the passage of the Consent Agenda, Commissioners Boujack, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, Legrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Breevy, Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildbrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor, Vice Chair Green, Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. Consent Agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our resolutions for today, and for the first one, I will call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move we take Propose Resolution 05022455 from the table, and it be renumbered to reflect today's date as Resolution 07182482.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Legrand. All right. Now, this will then continue our deliberation. By the way, the motion is made, they'll continue the deliberation that we initiated previously when it was first raised, and I will open if there are any questions or comments. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if we could just start by having Administrator Vanderberg talk about what our current status is with the plan for next year for funding with the MIDC? Because we did submit a plan, knowing that we were in a bit of flux. Can we?
Oh, sure. We can do that.
There's a motion to bring it off of the table, put it back on. That has been supported by you. We need to get it on the table. So, the question is... Sorry, I led you astray. It's not a debatable motion. Voice vote? Voice vote, those that support the motion to put it back on the table, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that do not, say no. It is supported. It is back on the table now. Commissioner Legrand. And I think you asked a question about the Administrator providing some additional response, which is, I will ask him to do that at this point.
Sure. And I would call on Craig Paul, who has those discussions directly with the state, if that's okay.
Yeah. Craig Paul, I think Kristin Holtz is here as well. I see her in the background.
Good morning. So, at this point, the MIDC at its June meeting approved... There's two pieces to a grant application with the MIDC. There's the compliance plan, and there's what they call the cost analysis. The compliance plan that we submitted, that component, was approved by the MIDC. The cost analysis was not approved by the MIDC. They indicated at that time that they wanted to take a look at our third-quarter report numbers, which are due the end of this month. That was the same determination that they made for other systems that were in the process of implementing the new attorney compensation standard. And they wanted to take a look and see how are we actually doing with spending the money that was allocated to us. So, what that means is we have to go back and reapply for the grant. So, the compliance, the compliance plan, and we can revamp it to reflect the current... However the vote turns out here, we will amend and resubmit an amended application reflecting that.
All right. I'm going to ask the Administrator if you have any further comments as we put this motion back up on the floor.
Sure. I did want to just provide a little bit of clarification on a couple of comments that were made. We did update the FAQ on June 24. To my knowledge, we've answered all Commissioners' questions since the last meeting. And also, on March 28th, we did send the health plan and a side-by-side comparison of health plan, retirement, and other benefits to the KCOD leadership. So, just a couple of clarifications.
All right. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I wanted to ask a little bit about, on three items. One, this was referenced in the FAQ, just to make sure it's on the record here. Can you speak to some of the other direct meetings you held with other stakeholder groups in our county to talk about this transition?
Sure. We did meet with the NAACP, the West Michigan Hispanic Center, the West Michigan Hispanic Chamber, also members of the Urban League and African Collaborative. There's a couple more we still want to meet with and do plan to have a full engagement as the new system rolls out.
And was there any feedback provided from such meetings?
The only feedback that I would consider to be criticism was to making sure that we have good engagement on the selection of the public defender and make sure there's an adequate timeline for that hire.
Which, actually, you just fed into my next question so beautifully. Can you talk a little bit about that process? I know that previously, the proposed timeline had a fairly quick turnaround for hiring the chief public defender. I think it was essentially a three-week process from posting to hiring. Can you talk a little bit about, should this pass today, the time between posting to interviews to final decision? And who the Administrator proposes to involve in that decision process?
Sure. The posting would go out today, if approved. And then, the, you know, we would advertise in all of the places where somebody would look for a position like this. And I think, you know, obviously, part of the timeline is independent on the applications we get. I mean, we want to have a robust applicant pool. But certainly, hiring somebody at this point, mid-July, you know, if we get somebody on board by the end of the summer... I mean, I think our, we'd love to have someone aboard as soon as we can, but we are going to absolutely run a quality process. And there would be engagement by the board, two Commissioners on the interview panel. Also, I think we would definitely have a session where we would have candidates meet the community and answer questions people have, kind of reception, kind of...
Not to dissimilar from the process we had for hiring a county Administrator?
Sure. Yeah. And so, certainly, we intended to be an inclusive process, and we understand the importance of this hire, and will make sure we do a good job of that.
And then, lastly, you know, if I recall correctly, the contract with KCOD currently ends in October, or maybe the end of September.
End of September.
Forgive me. And I'm assuming we are not planning to have KCOD completely transfer over or transition over to the Office of Public Defender in that timeline. Can you map a little bit about the final timeline for the overall transition?
Sure. We have two paths that we've identified. One path would be if KCOD is willing to extend their contract through the end of the year, which we think will provide for a smoother transition for employees. And then, the other path is if they do not agree to extend the agreement, how we would plug those gaps and make sure we're still providing the service that's critically necessary.
And then, last but not least, you know, I'm looking at the Public Defender Independence Council and the proposed members that we have here. One thing that dawned on me during this discussion, you know, we have the proposed members, the executive director of either the State Appellate Defender's Office or the Legal Assistance Center, two private-practice criminal defense attorneys, one officer of the Grand Rapids Bar Association, and one, the board chair or their designee. And then, under this, essentially saying they cannot be prosecutors... Members cannot be prosecutors, judges, current law enforcement professionals, et cetera, or public defenders within indigent defense roster or KCOD. Does that also include board members of KCOD, provided they are not themselves also public defenders or roster attorneys?
My thinking was that it would not prohibit that.
And, you know, just given how, should this pass today, there is certainly a need to help continue to build and rebuild trust in this institution. And the comments and the timeline and the plans that you've provided do provide me a certain degree of confidence that that could be, could be achieved. I wonder if it is appropriate to either add to the council a former board member of, you know, should this pass, of KCOD's governing board? Or at least hearing from the chair, whether, should one of those board members also meet the criteria listed below, would that be an appropriate appointment?
Certainly be, from my judgment, it'd certainly be appropriate to consider that as an appointment.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I, you know, as I've stood here and took the comments from the public and saw others, you know, I've gone back and forth on this issue as many times, almost, as the zoo parking lot. But the one thing that I do think is, what I spoke before here 11 weeks ago, my two biggest concerns were broader public engagement, a more discerned process for hiring a chief public defender. And those answers have shown that there is an ability to get that done. Certainly, in a perfect world, we'd have more of that buttoned up by this point. But I also know that standing in limbo is not going to do anyone any good. I want to reiterate very clearly that everything I've seen from the attorneys at KCOD, you are phenomenal defenders, you are phenomenal attorneys. And as I see it from the NAPD study, I think Chair Steck put it very well. Great attorneys don't always make great policy managers, and that's okay. And the fact is, the obstacles that KCOD has been facing during the ramp-up are things that a county already has covered, and/or a thing that a county already provides. And I'm not here to say that all... And I'm not here to say that all the questions have been answered, or that all concerns have been rectified. But I do certainly see the timeline that's been presented, the process that's been explained here in public, shows me that there is a, we have the ability to put forward a transition that can assuage these concerns, and ensure that if we do have an office of the public defender, that it is one that is a hallmark, and, for indigent defense that's in-house. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Rienter.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this has been an interesting topic, for sure, and I'm still learning as I go. And one of the things I've heard was that it's really not a good policy for a county to make the arrests, the prosecutions, the sentencing, and then also be responsible for this indigent defense. And because it's alluded to that there's a conflict of interest there potentially. But I look at our sheriff and what she does, and our prosecutor, and certainly at the jail, there's a lot of programs out there that, once people are incarcerated, the last thing they want to do is have recidivism, which is a huge problem. And it seems like there's so many programs baked into this county program throughout different levels, where we're fighting those things all the time. We're not trying to get people in jail and kick them while they're down. There's been so much effort, money spent, to keep people out of jail. So, it kind of flies, it's a little bit contradictory to what some are having us believe, that we can't do all this under a county heading. I think we've bent over backwards for people, because it's costly to keep people in jail. It's better that they don't come back, and that we can make them productive members of the society. And I think these guys have done a wonderful job over the years. But again, a little bit above my pay grade, I have to take the word of people around me that know this a little bit better than I do, which I'm doing on this issue. But I think the county does a great job at trying to prevent recidivism, and, and the God pod, and, and just certain things that they run, and, you know, work release programs. They don't want people in their jails. They just get them out and be productive. So, I just wanted to kind of draw that conclusion.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Becklet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administrator Vanderburg, can you talk a little bit about one of the comments that was brought up about political or social conflicts that might lead to an interesting issue of independence? I think, I think the Speaker may have been mistaken that you weren't the one that was quickly dismissed from our county.
Oh, yes, thank you. That's another clarification.
Yeah. Just, just curious about, you know, sort of things that are already baked into our processes and our policies in the county that would address that, or perhaps gaps that we could identify as the Board to try to prevent that kind of non-independence?
Sure. You know, right now, when you look at the prosecutor, the courts, the sheriff, and the county Administrator, none of us are the boss of any of the other. We all have responsibility under state statute, or under the Constitution, if you're the sheriff, prosecutor, or the courts, for the, for overseeing the operations. And so, we need to work collaboratively, and we do. We don't always agree. Sometimes we disagree, but we always find ways to work that out. However, I think any one of those officials would tell you that I have never said to them, wow, you need to do this different. Because I don't know their business, just I don't, like, I don't know what the attorney in court needs to do. And so, I do have an example of having been in this position in Ottawa County, where there was conflict between the prosecutor and the chief public defender, or the courts and the chief public defender. And again, when they're organized under the Administration, then I'm representing them in that discussion. And so, I think you would be hard-pressed to find an example of where I failed to represent the county public defenders' office that was organized underneath my authority. I would just also mention, as some of the testimony you heard, this is a predominant method of organization in the country, and with 30 of these offices in the state, in the state, I've yet to hear an example of a county Administrator or somebody from Administration interfering with the job that defenders are doing in court. So, I deal at a policy level, I deal at an administration level, dealing with budgets, relationships with the state, problems that come up. If I'm brought into discipline issues per county policy, those are all the kinds of things that an Administrator deals with, and certainly not what's happening in the nuts and bolts during a court hearing.
And then, just a quick follow-up. When we think about equal employment opportunity-type conversations, when we're thinking about how we are not discriminating against individuals for their various characteristics or demographics, can you talk a little bit about what our current system has in terms of preventing us from saying discriminating against a person that works in the office of the defender for their political beliefs, or their sexuality, or anything?
Well, we have county policy that protects people. Our HR policies protect people. In the sense of hiring, we use Higher Reach, which is a program that then Mercy, now Trinity, donated to West Michigan to use. And it involves testing that helps eliminate implicit bias. I mean, the kind of bias we're not even aware of when we make certain decisions. But certainly, I think state law, everything from the Hatch Act and the Larson Act, do protect employees that work for the county from that type of discrimination.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Chair Steck. While I certainly acknowledge that indigent defense is something that we need to provide, and we need to provide services at the highest level, for me, this proposal really misses that mark. It doesn't have any of the factors of what I would consider a Kent County approach. It's not collaborative, it's not innovative, it's not a community approach, and it's not an approach that I think will offer the highest level of services to this community. I have issues with creating a new department and increasing our staff by 3% in one vote. I have concerns with the true independence of this office. I have concerns, because I don't think that government can do things better than a nonprofit or an authority. My biggest concern, though, is with the funding of this office, and more important, the future funding of this office, because I don't think the state is going to fund these positions at 100% forever. The fact that we also don't have a plan for, we'll cut those positions at that time, is also very concerning. So, for these reasons, I'm not going to be able to support this plan at this time. I don't think that this is the best option for all of the residents of Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So, I just want to, to a point of clarification, that our option today is to, to support this, or our indigent clients will be supported by roster attorneys? Is, is that what we're doing today? The KCOD contract won't be extended, so that they can be the provider?
That is correct. The issue before us is not whether or not to extend the contract with KCOD. The issue before us is whether we continue with just a roster system, or whether we use a department with a roster system wrapped around it.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. I mean, that's, that we're, so we're in between a rock and a hard place, right? Either we like the proposal the way it's, it's built, or we don't. But thinking about the clients that this, that KCOD serves, and that a new department would be serving, I'm, I'm really hard-pressed to, to, to say that I'm not going to support this and go to a full roster system. It's, it's bad choices all the way around when we think about that. But, understanding that, you know, over 30 counties within our state already have the system set up, I'm a little bit more inclined to say I'd prefer that, you know, a system that has been tried and true amongst the other counties in the system be the option, as opposed to a full roster system of attorneys who may or may not want to engage with the indigent clients in the way that we need them to, to be engaged with. And it's also, just another point. So, it's been stated that the Administration shared some of the personnel information with the KCOD leadership. And I, I just want to see, see if there's a possibility for that to actually be shared directly with the staff of KCOD, so that they can have the opportunity to decide whether or not this is something that would be beneficial to them, if they decide they want to apply for these positions with the county. It's possible to do that? Okay. And so, I just, I just want, I'm asking these questions because, again, I feel like we're, it's the, the perception is that we can move forward with KCOD when the Board is not the one who decides whether or not that contract continues. The Administrator is the one who can, who decides if that contract continues. And so, I've heard a lot of comments today that we should vote no, so that KCOD can continue in this role. And I, it doesn't sound like that's an option that we actually have. And so, I want to be clear that our really, our only two options are to propose, to approve this new department, or say, we are okay with all of these indigent clients, of which 1,200 cases have, since May, have been assigned to KCOD. So, those 1,200 cases, plus any new that would come, would go to our system of roster attorneys, which is hugely problematic, from my perspective, and I'm sure many other Commissioners' perspectives. Is that what we're seeing? I just, I, I keep asking the question, because, again, I want it to be clear that those are our options.
That is correct. And I think that, and Al can address this, that if, for some reason, this didn't pass, and we were left with the roster system, efforts have been undertaken to assure that the roster system is robust enough to do that in a transition.
Okay. Again, I just feel like, if that's, if those are my options, I'm going to support the creation of a new department. Is it the best option? I agree with Commissioner Teal. No, not really, right? But what are the other options? We want to ensure that our residents who cannot afford legal representation have it, and that they're, you know, served by attorneys who are taken care of by their employers, and that they are valued as well. And I think that the county has a way to set that up, so that that happens. But if the options are really the department or roster, I'm going to choose the department, the new department. And I just want us to really understand what our options are, and what our options are not, and what we can do with this motion, and what we can't do. And again, I'm the first one to say that I don't like either option. But if we have to make this choice, and I'm going to choose the department, because the clients, that our residents who need these services matter most, and I want them to be represented by, by a system that is set up to provide them with the best legal representation.
Thank you. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. Usually, government moves very slow. Get very frustrated with that. But today, we're moving too fast. We have options that we can create with our Administrator, if he so desired. We can wait, create an authority, as Commissioner Teal said. We see that there are changes within the K, H, oh, I'm sorry, the authority. KCOD, thank you. We see that there are changes that have been made. I do not believe that we have all of the facts and all of the information before us, on both sides. And for us to rush to make a decision and say, these are our only options, I feel is disingenuine. I feel that it is not in the best interest of those 1,200 cases. That's 600 cases in two months. How are we going to catch up if we don't have the staff that are willing to work with us? Because in the report, I believe that there, it was said, that if we don't have, hire enough people, we hope that the, the KCOHD, am I saying it wrong?
KCOD.
KCOD, I apologize. We hope that, I keep saying KCOD. We hope that they will work with us until December, when we get it together. But what if they don't? So, we have, right now, the summertime, and I don't know if this is correct, but I believe crime probably goes up. So, right now, we're looking at 600 cases a month, but we could be looking at 700, you know, 1,000 cases more. So, how do we plan on making a smooth transition with people who we don't trust, it sounds like, and who don't trust us? How are we going to move forward with that process?
So, I'll let-
How can we?
I'll let the Administrator respond to the question of what would be the approach for making sure that there, nobody falls in the cracks during this transition, if the KCOD lawyers choose not to work with their clients in this time period.
We have, well, two things. We have designed a roster system that we think will work, if we are, if it's necessary to do so. We've had, I think, HR told me, 10 individuals have contacted us already, desiring to be employed by the office. We've had a local law firm that's offered to supply attorney positions to do this kind of work, should we need them. So, I think we do have it covered. Craig and Kirsten have been working on this directly. So, if either of you would like to address that more fully, please step up.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Yes.
You said we have 10 people, but according to the report, we need 73.
Well, we haven't advertised. Those are just people that have contacted us and said, hey, we're interested if and when this happens.
Good morning, again. So, we have been working a lot to sit there and build a more robust roster. Our position that we've been taking is, we need a more robust roster, regardless of how this turns out. And so, we've been working on taking off, if you will, some of the rough edges about how our contracts work. We want to simplify the application process. We've been making reach-out efforts to local, to the Grand Rapids Bar Association, to other local groups, to sit there and say, when we open up our new application process, which should come, which should take place before the end of this month, say, please apply. It's going to be easy. We'll take applications at any point in time. It used to be, we were kind of limited to mostly once a year. So, we've done a lot of work to there and, and build a more robust roster to take care of load.
Sorry, did you have a follow-up? No, okay. I think we, Commissioner Coleman was next.
No.
Commissioner Hennessy's next.
This is an interesting discussion. I appreciate Commissioner McLeod's comments, because, you know, I feel like we're making, you know, we have bad or worse. How, how are we going to decide? And Commissioner Teal has, you know, expressed, so one of my concerns is adding to county staff, adding new department. But it really ties into two. You know, we have a KCOD that may have some, you know, problems that were cited in the report, and that need to be corrected. So, do we throw the whole thing out? And apparently, that is, the, the choice of that has been made for us. But, but I'm worried that we have, that, that organization is 50 years old. What I'm concerned about is that we set and develop a policy that will not be dependent on having an Administrator who will make the right decisions, that we don't make the, set up a system that becomes too personality-based, or to the political climate of the time, in terms of how we perceive the defendants who are before us. And, and that, that remains a concern, and I, and I don't know that that can be addressed by anything in this particular resolution today.
Let's see. You, have you addressed this already? All right. So, then, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just want to, from my vantage point, especially getting to spend time with my constituents this summer, when I discuss this, there's just, in general, an alarm that goes off. And I think that there's, in terms of whether or not this independence can happen, I appreciate Administrator Vanderburg's efforts to reach out to the community. And I think it's possible that this could be a fair structure. But at this time, my community still feels concerned. So, I believe, I'll be voting no on this.
Let's see. Commissioner McGrand.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, we have been talking about this for a long time. I appreciate clarifying points made by Commissioner McLeod in particular, about what the choice is in front of us today. And that, you know, we hear comments like, instruct the Administrator, and that is actually not what the role of the Commissioner is. And, and I'm trying to stay very focused on the choice before me. I'm trying to stay very focused on this need that needs to be served. And a lot of frustrating comments are made, that are really not to the point. If we look at the MIDC and the establishment of the MIDC, it represents a huge step forward for the state of Michigan in indigent defense. This is a constitutionally guaranteed service. Our whole legal system is based on having adequate- Our whole legal system is based on having adequate representation in an adversarial situation in a course of, court of law. Everyone gets an advocate. That's hugely important. So it's very frustrating to me when I hear talk about funding, and how the county's building out a department as if we're gonna, like, double the amount of people who are mowing lawns in the parks or something. This money does not come from the general fund. This money comes from the state. Perhaps it originates of the federal government. I'm just showing my ignorant there, ignorance there. But this money is dedicated for defense, and with the much-improved rates that the MIDC has guaranteed, it's guaranteeing support, it's guaranteeing research, it's guaranteeing investigators, mitigation specialists, it's guaranteeing those things that an adequate defense requires. So we are not talking about padding the county budget, we are not talking about meaningfully building out the county's roster of employees overall. And I, I feel like, I'm very frustrated, I've heard these arguments in many meetings now, that that is somehow a fundamental problem with this plan, and it really is not. In addition to that, there, I mean, I've, this is a matter of importance to me, and I've spoken with people across the state, I've spoken with people at the MIDC, I've spoken with chief defenders in other counties in Michigan, wanting to know what's their experience. What's their experience of independence? Are they independent? Do they feel pressure from the sheriff? Do they feel pressure from the prosecutors? The answer is yes. The answer is yes. And the answer is, they are able to maintain their independence, and they fight back. One of the arguments for doing it this way is that it demonstrates public support, that this is part of a government-guaranteed service, which it is. This is a guaranteed government service, that someone who is indigent gets an adequate defense. So the nature of defense requires that we have the independence, which I believe, you know, I don't think our current system is perfect, I don't think this proposed system is perfect. The question is, is it adequate? Is it gonna provide that adequate defense? The research that I've done, who I've talked to, I believe that it is adequate, and I believe it is vastly superior to the roster system. I think that Mr. Kohlhouse brought up an excellent point. You know, is, is the system trustworthy? That is one of the questions that I asked Administrator Vanderburg, that I asked Chair Steck. Can we trust this system? And, you know, when we have potentially, when we have people subverting the proper role of government, will we have, will we experience problems? You know, I guess the answer is, we might, but I also believe that we do have guarantees, we do have the ACLU, we do have people who will be keeping an eye on that, and it won't happen instantly, things will not be instantly corrected, but I do believe that the systems are in place that will support and ensure that a county-run, public defender can do an adequate job at this, at this, you know, at, at defending our indigent clients. So I, I will be voting yes. This is not a fun vote. This is a huge change. All change means loss, and there's gonna be a lot of mourning of the loss if this passes, which is not clear to me that it will. And, and I will say that the rollout, to me, is not a sterling example of how a county goes about making an enormous change. I think we've had huge problems with communication, I think we've had huge problems with, you know, keeping everyone engaged and involved, and understanding what, you know, what the intention is going forward. So I think a lot of our difficulty is getting where we need to go. You know, I hope we can learn some lessons from that, because it has not been a great rollout. I will be voting yes. Like I said, it's not, it's, it doesn't make me happy, but it's really not gonna make me happy if we go to all roster. I don't think that's the best way to serve our, our indigent clients. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman, I think you had your answer.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, like many, have kind of struggled on the particulars of, of this issue, and I think Commissioner Teal summed up some of my concerns really well. But I, I do just wanna address, while the particular resolution on the table, we're only dealing with, are we going to do the, you know, create this new department, you know, up and down on that? It, it certainly, so the Board of Commissioners runs Kent County. Like, we are the authority. If we want to subsequently take up another resolution that says, "Look, we think it's the best idea to renew the contract with KCOD under these particular parameters," like, we can do that. Like, and it's the obligation to then implement that authority. I don't know that, I don't know the opinion of this board on, in totality, like, whether or not, like, if we say no to this one, if that subsequent motion would have a majority, you know, approval, I have no idea. But I just wanna make, make sure that it's, it's clear that, like, we are the authority here in Kent County. It's, it's not that we are, with this particular resolution, we're only talking up and down on this one particular, the new county department for this function, but it's perfectly within our capabilities, if the majority thinks that we should renew the KCOD contract under some parameters, to do that. Like, that is our prerogative, that's, that's our authority. Again, I don't, I, I think, I'm convinced the administrator, you know, believes this to be the, the best program, that it's the, the best way to proceed. I think he's, you know, I concur with some of the concerns around communication issues, but I, I genuinely think that, you know, he's, you know, operating through this process, and, and staff are operating in good faith, that they believe this to be the, the best outcome. I just wanted to emphasize that, like, we may be, you know, considering just, you know, up or down on this particular matter, but this board runs Kent County, we can, we can do something different if we want to.
All right. Commissioner Antor, you kinda have your hand up, I think.
Yeah, this is a second go.
Well, okay, you're right, this is a second go. So let me see, Commissioner Ponstein. I'll, I'll get back to you.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So I'll just keep this quick. I want to thank Commissioner Legrand to bring up the funding issue. I mean, this issue has been front and center for the state legislature, the governor, for years and years and years, and they needed a way to provide more funding and better results. And I think that's what the state did, and like the state always does, they then passed those things on down to county government. There is an option three. Option three would for the state of Michigan to finally step up and retake the courts, and they run them. I mean, if all the negatives that I've heard in this room today are so bad about county government, why isn't the state taking it over? Because the state does know that the county does do it better, and now they're gonna be providing the funding to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for a first chance, and then I will go back to Mr. Antor, Commissioner Antor. It looks like, we're back to you for a second.
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'm trying to remember the number over the last two months of cases you guys-
Oh, you gotta look, oh.
Sorry. I figured they might have-
You're talking to me, right?
Yes, sir.
Even though you're looking there?
What was, what was the number, number cited over the last two months that they've represented?
I mean, how many clients have they represented, like, now, or?
The last couple months.
How many cases? I think the representation to us was, there were 1,200 new cases since we've been looking at this, which would be around the first of the year, I guess.
I'm just curious, how many of those cases ended up going to court, trial court, or?
I don't know that we know that.
We have to have a history-
I can tell you, one went, because I was in the jury.
Well, I'm just saying, we have a history of indigent defense, and they have a, they certainly will have a number, how many of their cases overall go to court. And my guess is, is probably-
My guess is, we could probably get that information?
I think it's pretty relevant, because that goes to how much work is entailed, because most cases these days go, you know, they're, they're pled out. I don't care, across all spectrums, they get pled out. It's very common these days. So I just would like to know the actual workload, it would help me. And that may not change if we take over, it may be the same math, it's gonna be, everything's getting pled out anyhow. But that's generally, if you have a ton of cases sitting on a docket, and nothing's moving, that's, the plea deals become more and more common. So to me, it's an important issue. What type of work is being done, and are these things just getting rammed around through the system on plea deals?
I think one of the intentions in creating the MIDC was to provide resources so that there were less cases that had to be settled. And so I think, as we look at the data, there are more cases that are actually going to court rather than being settled since the inception of the MIDC. As far as the caseload, it is what it is, and we have to work a system that meets the need, because it's mandated.
So it sounds like this new system may give the indigent better defense than the current.
I think the system will provide a better opportunity to provide a better average of decent, of defense, based on the administration of it, not that we're gonna find better attorneys to do the work, because I think the attorneys are doing a great job.
Yeah, I agree, and, but those are the types of questions that I think are kind of important. So, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? If not, I don't comment on every resolution, but I'll probably make some, probably, I will make some comments on this resolution. So we have been looking at this internally for some period of time, we've been deliberating it as a board for months now. And the first time it came around, one of the things that I articulated is that, as commissioners, we have a fiduciary duty, and we have a fiduciary duty only to our constituents. I see that the kinds of resolution changes, the changes that are inherent in that are, in many cases, painful, sometimes personal, sometimes it has reverberations. I have sat in a firm that went through a dissolution, it's a painful process. There's nothing fun about it. And if my responsibility here was to the KCOD, if my responsibility was to the roster lawyers, I might call the shots differently here, but it isn't. My sole responsibility, our sole responsibility, our sole fiduciary duty are to the constituents of Kent County. And when it comes to that duty, it's a question of, what does it take to assure that the public services we're responsible for are provided in the most effective, that is, the highest quality way we can provide, at the most cost-effective way? It is to make sure that they're available to everyone, and done so in an equitable way. Equitable assurance of provision to services done in a way that assures the best chance for getting high quality and addressing the potential costs. So when it gets to the question of indigent defense, there's no question, we have the duty. This is the constitutionally mandated duty. We can't skate on it, we can't walk away from it, we can't say, "Gee, this isn't fun, let's not do it." We must do it. So we must do it if we take our fiduciary duties responsible seriously. We have to do it in a way that assures that we have the maximum capacity to guarantee the highest quality of service, and the best control over cost. So how do we do that here? So I, I have very little experience with what it's like to have two torn hamstring muscles, but I do have that now, by the way. But I have 40 years of experience in what it takes to provide good quality service in the legal profession, and to control costs. I've worked in boutique firms, I've worked in mid-sized firms, I've been the managing shareholder of law firms, I've worked as an equity partner in one of the largest, at the time, the largest law firm in the state, and now I'm a sole practitioner. So I've seen it in many kinds of ways, and it is not easy to assure consistent quality service in this profession. And it's not easy to control costs. But it can be done. What's the secret for doing that? Well, it's not really a secret. It is effective strident systems. And what system is going to give us the most control? Nothing is guaranteed in this business. But I think the question for us is, what model, what system of providing this mandated service gives us the opportunity to best guarantee to our constituents, you're gonna get the best quality service, not just this time, every time? And what gives us the ability to have the control over those costs most effectively? So I've looked at the options before, so I've also looked at continuing with KCOD. Now, KCOD is not a question whether KCOD did some good work. They do do some good work. The attorneys are excellent attorneys. That is not a question. I think the question for me, and I suggest the question for all of us, is, what's the model, what's the system that we can rely upon that gives our constituents, constituents the best opportunity? What's the best promise for that high-quality service at a controlled cost? And I'm convinced that this model does it. That being able to put in place a model for service that will have independence, it's been demonstrated over and over again that independence can be maintained in a department, but does so in a way that provides this service, not just with excellent lawyers, we already got that, but with systems, support systems, management systems, HR systems, IT systems, all of those systems that are essential in today's world to have the consistent high quality of legal service. And secondly, it gives us the capacity to do the kind of control over cost that you can never do in a roster system, and you can't do in a contract system, but you can do it in a department system. So for me, I'm considering all the options. I'm considering no option is perfect. But what's that option that gives us the ability to go to our constituents and say, "We've looked at it, and we've identified the system we believe gives us the best chance of giving you consistent quality services that we're required to give you, and do so in a way that we can control the cost in an effective way?" That's why I think, as long as I'm responsible for doing this as a duty to my constituents, I'm compelled to approve this, and then move forward and make this department the best department it can be in the state. I support the resolution. And with that, I got nothing more to say. Will you take the roll call of the vote?
On the motion to approve Resolution 82, Commissioners Bouzec, Diaz-
No.
Peckla-
Yes.
Wooden-
Yes.
Baker-
No.
Legrand-
Yes.
Oliver King-
Hennessy.
Yes.
McCloud-
Yes.
Sparks.
No.
Teal-
No.
Brevi-
Yes.
Coleman-
No.
Burl-
Yes.
Ponstein-
Yes.
Hildebrand-
Yes.
DeBoer-
No.
Merchant-
Antor-
Yes.
Vice Chair Green-
Yes.
Chair Steck-
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 13 yays, six nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. All right, let's move to item number 8B, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks. Caught you off guard, didn't I?
You certainly did. I was really touched by your speech. Sounded like a great attorney. Resolution 483 of today's date, City of Grand Rapids contribution to support the West Michigan Welcome Plan Administrator's Office.
Excellent. Is there support? It is supported by Commissioner Burl. Questions or comments on this one? If not, this one is a voice vote. All those that support, please say yes.
Yes.
Do not support, please say no. It is approved. For our next item, 8C, I will call on Commissioner McCloud.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 84 of today's date, the fee schedule addition coming to us from the Parks Department.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments? I hear none. All those that support, please say yes.
Yes.
opposed, say no. That, too, is approved. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move.
It is my pleasure to move, Resolution 85 of today's date, the Balk Family Park CIP request comes to us from the Parks Department.
Is there support? Supported. Commissioner DeBoer. Questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to thank the Balk family for this gift.
Commissioner Hennessy.
I also would like to thank the Balk family for this gift, and for the Parks Department and the work that they're doing to keep this project going for us. It's very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, this is a roll call. Will you please take the roll?
On Resolution 85, Commissioners Bouzec- On Resolution 85, Commissioners Bouzec.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Peckla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Oliver King. Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildebrand. DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant. Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Chair Stec.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose Resolution 86 of today's date, the Kent County Draft Opioid Spending Plan for Years One and Two, which comes to us from the Health Department.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Antor. If we have questions, Jenny James is here to potentially respond. So I think that Commissioner Diaz is first.
Thank you, Chair. I have two main questions. The first is, this might be a better question for corporate counsel. I saw that there's been some situation happening with the bankruptcy case where these opioids originated from, and I was wondering if there's any, if you see any immediate risk to us receiving those funds?
The bankruptcy case you're talking about involves Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family, and so that bankruptcy was tossed out. So the national litigation involving those has to go back to either negotiations or potentially trial. That part of the money, we won't see for a number of years in all likelihood. That doesn't impact the money before you today. That's coming from other sources that were also involved in opioid manufacture or distribution.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, and this relates to some of the public comment that we received. I see on page 10, lines 6 and 8, that we don't have any funding for 6 in the first two years and for 8 in the first year. And I was wondering if we could have some feedback as to, you know, the thought process that went behind that.
Jenny James from her Administration Office is here to answer that question.
Yeah, I think line 6 you're referring to is the harm reduction training.
The syringe programs.
Oh, syringe program. No, in this particular allocation, we did not include any funds for that service. Currently, the State of Michigan and the City of Grand Rapids have invested in that particular service through the RED project, so we did not include that in this plan since those two funding sources we're supporting.
Okay. And then as far as the line 8, for doing some education for middle and high school students?
Yeah, that one is funded in year two, not year one. It is a high priority for everyone, but it didn't land as high on the priority list as the other items that are funded. So we acknowledged its importance by including it in year two, but focused the first year on the higher priority items from the task force.
Okay. And I apologize, this last question, this might be somewhere in there, but if I remember correctly from prior discussion, we're not spending everything that we have available at the moment, if that's correct.
Correct. This is just the very beginning. We have many more funds in our account, and after we get these going and research how effective these were and reexamine priorities, we'll identify how to spend the future funds and bring those to the board. Also, it was mentioned in public comment, the MSU is supporting a public outreach effort for us where we will gain more input from families impacted by family members that have experience with substance use disorder and individuals who have lived experience.
Okay, thank you.
I think Commissioner McLeod was next.
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to just ask about the study that was mentioned in public comment and the relationship to the allocation of funding and if there is an opportunity, even after this budget is approved, to make adjustments to the budget that is before us to refocus some of those efforts based on the results of that study. That would be helpful to know. I had quite a few conversations with the opioid task force, some of the members, including Jenny as well as some other people, and one of my main issues was that I had questions and concerns about whether or not this budget allocation actually reflected the priorities of the county, right? Because I feel like, you know, no funding, what it shows is what our priorities are. And if we're not even referencing the fact that, what you had mentioned, that the state and the City of Grand Rapids are funding 6 and 8, then it appears that we don't value those things as priorities in this first two-year budget. And so I do think it's really important to, even if we're not allocating funds this year, to reference specifically why we're not and that it is a priority for the county because I would beg to differ that harm reduction is something that we should value in this, and I believe that we do, but I still don't believe that this report clearly references and shows that, and the budget clearly doesn't because there's no notation that says specifically, these are being funded by the City of Grand Rapids and the State of Michigan, therefore we're going to focus our efforts on the issues that are currently being funded. Currently, the pilot in the jails, you know, we're providing funds for that. I had a huge issue with that because that's a huge portion of the budget that we're allocating. I think that additional context about why the task force prioritized it this way is really important because, again, it makes it appear that the county, that all of us commissioners value these things first, even though that's not the case, and I've made my position very much known in terms of, I think that we need to focus on those that have been harmed the most from, you know, this opioid crisis within our county, and it is those, it is the people that the person that provided public comment earlier mentioned. And if there's a study going on, if there's a way for us to directly address that we are concerned about that and that we are making inroads to making sure that we address those issues, I really want us to make sure that that is a communication that our constituents and the people in our county are receiving because this budget does not clearly reflect our priorities for, doesn't reflect my priorities for the county. And I don't know if I'm alone in that, but the way it looks, the conversations I've had, I feel better, right? But this still doesn't look like that. So what can we do to make sure that the communication that our constituents and the residents of Kent County receive, that they know that in year three, in year four, potentially within years one and two, we will make some redistributions based on the knowledge that we've gained from the study and from other things?
We do plan to update this April document to reflect updated data on overdoses and updated data on the dollars that have come in since this document was written, and that would be an opportunity to highlight some of the points that you're sharing and to just bring home a little stronger the place for harm reduction in here. I think what's partly not clear is it is inherent in some of the other investments. For example, the piece about communication and online resources, all of that, the efforts to get more information and education out to the community will include harm reduction, education and information, for example, along with the other harm reduction items in here. So it will be a greater part of the investment than it probably appears in the way it's written here, so we can work on that for the final version of the document and also based on the work with MSU. The resolution was written to provide us an opportunity to make some adjustments in case things come up during the next two years, so that also speaks to your interest and maybe there could be some adjustments that, of course, we would let the board know about first.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stec. So I've sat on the mental health board, the L R E currently sit on their substance abuse advisory committee, and the biggest thing that upsets me the most about this is here we, as a country, decided that there was a problem, and it was opioids, and it's the manufacturers of that. The settlement dollars do nothing to address that, and prior to the lawsuit, we were still funding all these treatment programs, and it just seems never to get better. So here we are, we had a bunch of class action lawsuits, lawyers were lined up to take a third of the settlement dollars for themselves and their firms, but at the end of the day, we did nothing to address the problem. We've got drugs flowing in from all four borders, east, west, north and south. The manufacturers of opioids got a slap in the hand, and they're going to still be manufacturing. Some of them agreed that they're not going to manufacture pain pills in the United States for six years, but we didn't do anything about them still manufacturing, sending them overseas, and then do the full circle on our borders. You know, we want to say by getting money, and we're going to be spending it this way, that we're going to solve this problem, and we're not. We're not. We don't have enforcement of our laws. We don't have enforcement of the prescription laws. We have very little control over it. I don't know if the gentleman that talked about the Michigan estate extension, whatever, really different conclusions he'll come to or they will come to that we haven't already come to, but I'm definitely opposed of how this settlement worked, how we went after the manufacturers, and we basically, we can pat ourselves on the back, but we've done nothing. Drug abuse is a serious problem, and it will always be a series of problems until our elected officials, top-down, start making it an issue. I've always stood, I'm not against treatment and help for these individuals because I've had a strongly principled belief that death should never be the punishment for addiction, but throwing money at the problem without a complete plan on how we can address this is not going to do anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
First, I'd like to thank Commissioner McLeod. Actually, the whole discussion, I mean, is tragic, but certainly Commissioner McLeod, I serve on the Network 180 board, and we looked at this, and I was very impressed with what it included. Until the public comment today, I didn't really think about what wasn't in there, but I really, I do worry that, I did worry until you answered some questions that the lack of funding for, say, the RED project could be viewed as the county not endorsing that, but I do think that we need to communicate that we do in fact, and so I appreciate Commissioner McLeod's concerns being raised, and I hope that we can continue to invest more in a broader way, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank you, Deputy Administrator James, for really working on this, and I know everyone who's been on the opioid task force has given a lot of time and have a lot of experience and passion and knowledge, and there's no way that our dollars are going to be adequate to what can, you know, the need that's out there. And I think that recovery particularly is an inefficient business. I'm very, I'm just so impressed by the RED project, and I'm impressed by the genuine recoveries that start in that harm reduction space, and I just really hope that we can be open to spending money there in the future. I hope that our public health approach will be able to, you know, show us the results that will, you know, underpin that kind of a decision in the future because there's just, there's just a lot of great work being done, and I would love to see some of this money go there. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hennessy.
In Legislative Committee, I questioned money for transportation to get to treatment, and since then, Jenny, you did forward me information that the Medicaid health plans will be required to help with this transportation as of October 1st. Perhaps you could elaborate since it was brought up before.
Could you speak to that?
I don't know that I can speak to it, I do know.
The baton has been passed.
Jason Storm, I'm with Cherry Health and I'm the task force as well, so this information just came out this week, but M D H H S did update some of the policies supporting Medicaid transportation for non-emergent transportation. That's where a lot of our treatment providers, getting transportation for our clients, that's where we get it through. And so it's been really restrictive. There's been a lot of limits on being able to get access for services, in particular substance use services. So now as of October 1st, they are required to fund that, and that is, you know, for a program like the one that I oversee, it's, they have to come in every day. So it's a huge barrier to treatment, and now that's going to be required, that is funded through our insurance systems and through our public systems. So that's going to be a huge reduction barrier.
Right. Commissioner Peckla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one follow-up to the comments that have been made about priorities and the fact that we have funding available that's not actually shown in this table, and it's really a systems-level question, which is that if there is such a thing as a West Michigan collaborative, or we know that there is collaboration amongst government entities on opioids, it would be great for there to be some sort of publication or clarity into that system so that we can see in spaces where we are not funding these issues or these particular priorities, that there is someone else that's doing it. And I think it's really about a systems-level connection, knowing that we are not the only entity that's involved in this space, but knowing that it is often the case that when you have multiple entities working in the same space, you have either duplication of efforts or inefficiencies or things that are dropped, right, because of lack of communication or understanding. So I hope that as you all are having those conversations with our colleagues in City of Grand Rapids and other municipalities, we're sort of giving a good picture of where are those funds going to these different priorities, knowing that everybody's priorities are likely to be slightly different as well. And I don't know if that belongs in a report, an updated report, or if that's a separate document, or just a separate conversation that we're having to have clarity into that process. The question I have is whether we have a process for evaluating the process that we used in creating this priority list. We heard public comment earlier, someone that was involved in opioid, as an opioid expert, but I wonder, do we have feedback from those that were involved in the process about how we went through and evaluated priorities and allocations? Do we have a methodology for either assessing how that went to determine if it's going to continue in the future from either those that were involved or those that weren't involved? Just thinking about a systems improvement lens here, how do we make sure that the process that we use to identify these priorities and these fundings is the one that's collecting the most voices that ought to be at the table?
That's a good question. We haven't formally done that yet. We were mostly trying to get through today, but I plan to be at the next opioid task force meeting if it's okay with Rachel and the co-chair. Perhaps we can include that as a formal item on the agenda to talk with that group of individuals, and they could gather input from others for us. Since we'll be doing a process like this or the same as this for the next 18 years as we spend out the funds, it's a good idea to make sure the approach worked.
Great, thank you.
All right. If nothing else, just a couple of questions, Jenny. Again, this is a recommendation for the allocation of the first two years of a 14-year flow of monies that are coming from these settlements. There are other cases that are still pending and monies that may still, I think we just heard about the Kroger case, so it is likely that we will have to make decisions in the upcoming months about additional allocations. The other is, this is not the only money spent in this space. The Oversight Policy Board, which Commissioner Ponstein sits on, I have sat on, also allocates a lot of money in this county for purposes of addressing prevention and harm reduction and those sorts of things, including funding the RED project. Can you identify now, how much money do we spend through the Oversight Policy Board or through the C M H system? You probably can't, but it's a substantial sum of money. It's a lot more than this $2 million.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a, Rachel and I had a good conversation with the lead there, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what those dollars are.
I guess I would encourage commissioners that are concerned about that, let's track back through what the Oversight Policy Board is doing by way of funding of these various projects. on that, on that Oversight Policy Board. All right. Any other questions or cons? If not, this is a roll call.
On the adoption of Resolution 86, Commissioners Boujek, Diaz, Pakla, Wooden, Baker, Legrand, Oliver King, Hennessy, McLeod, Sparks, Teal, Breevy, Coleman, Burl, Ponstein, Hildebrand, DeBoer, Merchant, Antor. Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, of 16 yeas, one nay, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. I'll move to our next item, and I'll go back to Commissioner Legrand again.
Thank you, Chair. It's my pleasure to move Resolution Number 86 of, sorry, 87 of today's date, the capital improvement program policy, which comes to us from the administrator's office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Boujek. Questions or comments on this motion? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. For our next item, again, I'll go back to Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I am pleased to move Resolution Number 88 of today's date, West Michigan Regional Planning Commission membership, which also comes to us from the administrator's office.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by, pardon me?
Hennessy.
Commissioner Hennessy. Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Boujek.
Thank you, Chair Steck. When this came before us at the Legislative and Human Resources Committee, we asked about the differences between this particular group, planning group, and the Metro Council. And it was clear with the evidence provided that there's a need for this. I think when you look at planning in general, if you have no plan, you have no future. So as a legislative human resource member, I voted in support of this, and I urge and ask all the other commissioners to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So I couldn't be at that meeting, this, when I saw the agenda here, because of, like, some of the county commissioners had conflicts with other meetings. But Al, I mean, this organization's been around for 40, 50 years, plus maybe? So I understand that they, they get a lot of federal fundings, it's targeted. It's not that they need to be eliminated. But is there, with, with all the other planning agencies in the county, is it still being effective? I know they used to come here and give reports every now and then. You know, and I'd see where we had three appointments, elected official, someone from the private sector, then I'm assuming other, it's just other. Is it still effective? I mean, who are our representatives? Because it's, I haven't heard about them in a while.
Yeah, I think that the original comment comparing Metro Council to this is probably a good place to start. They're really set up, they have different mandates that they're over. For example, the Metro Council, the biggest piece of the four areas of Metro Council focus is the transportation function. All money that's spent on planning or transportation with federal dollars has to go through the Metro Council process. So through the Policy Technical Committee, and then to the Governing Board as part of the overall plan. The West Michigan Planning Group exists under a different mandate. As I recall, it came during the Nixon administration and part of the U.S. Economic Development Administration. And basically, if you want to get any EDA grants, they're mandated with oversight of that process. They maintain what's called the OEDP, which is the, the place where everyone's plans that could involve ED, EDA funding are accumulated. And then, in order to apply to the US EDA, and I think it's actually managed by the Chicago Regional Office, it has to go through this group. And so it, it's, the other thing I do recall, and I think of Ottawa County where there's three Metro Council-style groups, because you've got the McAtaw Area Coordinating Council, you've got Windsor Dick up in the north, and then the east part of the county, there's a gap in there that isn't covered. Well, the West Michigan Planning Commission covers those areas that aren't covered by a group like the Metro Council. So I do think there's a, a number of things that, that are a benefit, and because there's different mandates. Now, if you, if the feds ever did change a mandate or allow the group to be combined or done, done otherwise, I think that would be a different story. But right now, they have a mandate to meet. I do think that in many areas of the county, we probably wouldn't be successful getting EDA money because there is an income bracket that it applies to. But I do think there's areas of the county that would be eligible. Certain projects could be funded with that money.
All right. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Al, we talked about three weeks ago or so about Metro Council, and you took my call on the phone. I appreciate the information. But it occurred to me that most of our members here probably weren't here the last time they came and gave a presentation. And I was wondering if it would be possible to have maybe a special order of business or some sort of thumbnail sketch of what they do, and so we can kind of get up to speed on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. All right. For our last resolution of the day, and for the fourth in a row, Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. It's my pleasure to move Resolution Number 89 of today's date, the Area Agency on Aging of West Michigan Fiscal Year 2025 Annual Implementation Plan, which comes to us from the Board Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Boujek. Questions or comments on this one? If not, this is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Those that oppose, please say no. It is approved. All right. Sorry about fidgeting so much. It's hard to sit on this injury. Let's see, we're at the public comment, second chance. Anyone from the public wishing to address us on matters within our general jurisdiction, you may do so at this time. Please identify yourself by your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes.
Is this the news? I think I got another story. That's crazy.
That clock is right. It's 11:30.
It's crazy. Long early. It's crazy. How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones. I stay at 967 Tamarack Avenue. Uh, I don't want to start. Okay, so I just did the Youth Justice Influence League, the esports league that I developed in partnership with the 70th Circuit Court. We just started our new season. It was pretty cool because my very first esports competition, I had Ferris State University as my title sponsor, and they brought their gaming PCs that they actually used to compete against other colleges. And I have 10 kids this season, and I got a couple little white kids in my program, a couple little Caucasian kids. And it was fun because one of the kids said that his dream was to actually compete on the Ferris State esports team. And I used to go to that college. I'm actually a Pike. And it's crazy. And he wanted to connect with the esports team. So when I say like I'm actually, I know I'm going to change the criminal justice system, I know I am one day, have direct connection to that school, and that school was my first title sponsor that actually ever helped me even do these esports competitions. And then one of the kids said, I want to be a competition organizer. He wants to do the same thing that I'm doing. He's a young Caucasian kid, and I was like, I'll show you everything that I learned, kid. I'll show you everything that I've learned to try to help other people. And so I know this esports league is going to be powerful. I'm going to be speaking to the Michigan Youth Center about this program that I developed actually being researched that other states will actually use to help get rid of juvenile court fines across the nation, which the state actually passed in 2023 in May. So I'm very excited about this work because I just started just doing the esports league because I was a kid on the residential homes and then the juvenile. And now I'm using those experiences to give back. I wish other people would use their experiences to give back to the community, but other people don't. And I wish they cared about those kids in those communities because there are young white kids that I said, like, as I usually say, there are young white communities that are poor also, and those kids are also in a criminal justice system. And I'm helping everyone, regardless of ethnicity or background. I'm just happy to give back to those kids and show them that there is a path to careers and jobs and getting out of poverty. And I can help different backgrounds and different ethnicities and be ethical about that, and hold myself to a high standard in regard. And so I'm very excited about the production. We start gamers, and then on Tuesday, on the next school board here for GRPS, I'm actually bringing the president of the largest esports organization to help build that infrastructure for our school district. So educational change is definitely coming. A very powerful educational change that'd be longevity, that'd help thousands of students, even after I die, because of the work that I'm doing here now. I think that's what I'm going to do, is leave a legacy of just giving back and having a true economic change on Kent County, but I believe the globe one day. Thank you. You guys have a good one.
Thank you, Henry. Good morning again.
Greetings once again. I often seek to inform you on what's happening at 425 East Cherry, less than a couple of miles, three or four miles from where we're sitting and standing. Like to make you aware of what they do with the parts of the infants that they dismember before birth and after birth. This comes from a pro-life website, and they were able to obtain the correspondence with the entities that engage in buying and selling parts of murdered babies. This is how one reads. Whole intact leg, include entire hip joint, preferably 22 to 24 weeks. Dissect by cutting through the symphysis, pubis, include the whole ilium, which is the hip bone, and pelvis. To be removed from fetal cadaver within 10 minutes, ship on ice. This is if they, this is an advertisement for the whole brain. Want the whole brain, both cortical hemispheres intact if possible, 16 to 22 weeks, fresh shipped on wet ice. Sounds like they're shipping fish or beef. This comes from the U.S. House Select Investigative Panel several years ago. Fetal brains, $3,340. Human fetal tissue, $10 at 500, or 10 at $595 each. Upper and lower limbs, with hands and feet, $890. Baby skull, matched to upper and lower limbs, $595. And those before-mentioned fetal brains, $2,230. I don't know if you knew this, but this is what's happening on a regular basis at 425 East Cherry, and of course, all around our country. If you support Planned Parenthood, which I call Planned Genocide, you're a part of this marketing of precious babies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt if you was going to.
No, I, I thought that was the shortest public comment I'd ever heard. Good morning.
Good morning again. Christopher Denny, again, I just rise to express my gratitude that as I have come to these commission meetings, you have all taken care and given due consideration to not only the items before you, but the process by which that is done, and to be ensured that it is done properly. So I hope that you understand that I do have one concern with what happened today, and that the Standing Rules, Number 313, seems to require, under those standing rules, motion to reconsider the table motion, two things. One, that at least as many members be present. And I know that on May 2nd, 20 members were present, and today, 19 members were present. And then also that it must be brought by someone who voted yes to table. And I don't believe that condition was met as well. I do want to bring that to all of your attention, so that you can do with it what you will. But I do not believe the standing rules were followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If not, we move on to administrators' report.
In view of the fact that we're about an hour and 15 minutes late for a budget work session, I can catch the board up in my weekly note or the digest, so. I'll pass.
Well done. Reports. Any commissioner with a report? I don't see any, so that leaves me. I am reporting that we have, I have proceeded to establish a Rule 6 Committee, the Childcare Task Force. There is attached materials with respect to that, including the recommendation that I have for the appointment to, as members to that committee or that task force. We spent a lot of time with various interest groups in identifying who would be the best folks to sit on this. And, and it also does provide that the, the charge would extend into next year. So with that, it does require Board approval, and I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to Rule 38A, I move to suspend standing Rule 61's limitation on the duration of a task force of the Board and appointments to a task force so as to allow the Childcare Task Force created, understanding Rule 61, to continue in existence until October 1st, 2025, and also to confirm the Chair's appointments to the task force for terms ending on October 1st, 2025.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner DeBoer. All right. Any questions or comments on that? If not, can I do a voice vote? It is a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt Commissioner Green's motion, Commissioner Boujek.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Legrand. Oliver King.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Hildebrand. DeBoer.
Yes.
Merchant.
Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, of 15 yeas, zero nays, motion is adopted.
Very good. That task force will roll up its sleeves and get moving. So thank you for that. And particularly, I think Commissioner DeBoer and Commissioner Pakla have agreed to sit on that as our representatives. All right, let's move on to miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous items? Commissioner DeBoer.
Commissioner Boujek.
Thank you, Chair Steck. At our Tuesday Legislative and Human Resource Meeting, I took the opportunity, under miscellaneous, to make comment about the current political climate in our country and the unfortunate assassination attempt on our former president. Much to my surprise, I was contacted by the New York Times. Why would the New York Times be interested in something that I said at a low-level Legislative and Human Resources meeting? So I felt.
What's the answer to that question?
So, so I felt compelled to come here and continue those comments. There is no place for political violence in our country, and that has been echoed by all leaders in our country. And we need to come together, not as Republicans and Democrats, but as Americans, to look at our political environment and find better ways to solve our differences. And the way to do that is through civil discourse. Politicians need to ratchet down the rhetoric and keep in focus the issues at hand that are important to the American people. Open borders, inflation, et cetera, et cetera. And so how do we do that? And we do that through leadership. And I made a comment earlier about the leadership of our Kent County Sheriff's Department. And I wanted to speak to the leadership that we have here at Kent County and the Board of Commissioners. I think our Chair Stan Steck has done. I think our Chair Stan Steck has done an excellent job of leadership of this Board of Commissioners. I looked at all of the appointments that were made to the sub-level committees, and he certainly made a conscientious effort to make sure that the representation on all those committees was fair and equitable and given to all members, whether Republicans or Democrats. So we need to come together. That shot, that bullet, was an opportunity for us to take pause and look at our political process and find ways to become more unified as Americans. And I think this opportunity, you know, kind of shines a light on Kent County because we are the envy of other counties in the country. I go to the Michigan Association of Counties. I've been to the National Association of Counties, and when they see and they hear what we are doing here in Kent County with our current board and our current leadership, we are the envy. AAA bond ratings and building concert stadiums and soccer stadiums and potential aquariums and having a fiscally responsible and balanced budget, we truly are the envy of others. So the citizens of this community need look no farther than the people that are in this room right now to find the leaders that they can trust and move forward with. And I urge the citizens to go to the polls and settle their differences with their votes. God bless America.
Thank you, Commissioner. Make my face turn red. All right. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, was not able to make the meeting on Tuesday. I was just coming back from a trip, but I did watch the meeting. I have to say, I was planning on concurring with Commissioner Boujack. I myself also was contacted by a reporter, not at the New York Times, but at the Washington Post, yesterday. They wanted to know about my thoughts about this week's political event and whether or not I have security concerns. I stated that I do not have any security concerns, that we do not tend to see those types of violent events happening in our county. And I have full trust in our Sheriff's Department. I imagine there have been some conversations around planning, but I do not feel the need to be a part of those. So I said as much. I concur that we do not, that political violence has no place in our society. As I've said in the past, my family originates from Mexico, which has had and continues to have issues with political violence, and we do not need that making its way here. With that being said, I said at the beginning of this week publicly that I completely reject the assassination attack of former President Trump that is completely unacceptable. But I think we also need to acknowledge that the former president has also, multiple times in the past, incited violence. And so I was heartened to see that he originally, or immediately after last week's event, was making cause for unity. I agree with those comments. I agree with those calls, but unfortunately, that did not last very long. And so I would just make the call out to anybody, any constituent of ours who is watching this or who will watch this. Voting has started. If you feel strongly about anything involving politics, you need to vote now. Do so on the 6th. Mail your ballot in, it's the easiest way to vote. Violence has no place in our society. Thank you.
Thank you. I will note that anybody watching has probably left an hour ago. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to say anything, but even, God bless you, but our current president two weeks ago said we need to put a bullseye on Donald Trump. You know, what is a bullseye? So I mean, it goes.
Make sure we reflect what we said we are.
Yeah, let's calm down on what may have been said. Let's look at what was actually said. And I also got a call from a reporter, and I'd like to apologize to him because his ears are probably still ringing because he asked me about that particular shooting. And so I hope he's doing well. Thank you.
Gee, nobody called me. What's the deal here?
I thought maybe the reporter's ears were still ringing from Tom Fox.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else? Yes. Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just real brief and certainly to not be unduly repetitious, but I would echo the comments of my colleagues that, yes, political violence has no place in this country. And certainly, it is the responsibility of every elected official to contribute to toning down the rhetoric so that we can resolve our disagreements in the democratic way. On another note, not to have the weirdest transition of my life, but a question was brought up about our Standing Rules, and I wanted to at least, because as many of you know, I've spent quite a lot of time with our Standing Rules.
I was going to address it, but I'll.
Yeah, I believe Commissioner Ben Green referred to me as a pig in mud when discussing our Standing Rules, so I just wanted to at least ask, as I understand it, a motion to reconsider is if a final vote is given, not a vote to table. And so should a measure be defeated or passed, then a motion to reconsider is appropriate. Given that this was a motion to table, it follows under tabling procedure, which means since we did not have a date certain, that's what required the first vote as prescribed by Roberts, which we defer to when our Standing Rules are silent, correct?
I couldn't have said it better. That is correct. It was not a motion for reconsideration, so, yes.
Thank you for the confirmation. I appreciate the comment. I appreciate the question. I think we always want to make sure we're being above board, but I just wanted to make sure we vetted that as quickly as possible.
Thank you. All right. Any other miscellaneous? All right, so I hate to be the guy to say this, but we have a work session after this, and it is the second work session on the budget. So budget's kind of important, so we will take 10 minutes. I'm going to stretch my hamstrings and rest for a little bit, and we'll come back in 10 minutes. But before we do that, I will call on Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I'd like to move to adjourn. So I'll call the Chair to our next meeting on Thursday, August.
Thank you. All those that support, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we adjourned. Thank you all.